All right, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 9th, meeting of the Arroyo Grande City Council. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lowe?
Here.
Councilmember Maravelia?
Here.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Here.
Mayor Ray Russom?
Here.
And would you please silently join me in a moment of reflection? Thank you. And would you also join me in the flag salute? That moves us straight to item five, so I'll turn it over to our city attorney to announce closed session announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. So for the closed session item that was read into the record on August 26, 2025, that item included no reportable action.
Thank you. And I should have asked before, we only have one public item on the agenda, but does anybody have any need to reorder anything? Okay, so we'll proceed as published. And item 5B, I will move that all ordinances presented at the meeting shall be read in title only and that all further readings be waived.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, can we get a roll call? Oh, excuse me. Yeah, let's do a roll call for that, please.
Mayor Ray Russom?
Yes.
Councilmember Maravelia?
Yes.
Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Thank you. This takes us straight into special presentations, item 6A. And I'd like to, this is the Honorary Proclamation Recognizing September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month, and I'd like to invite Demetrio Morales Salazar to the podium with me. Good evening. No, you can stay right here, and then you're going to get to tell us all the things Latino Outreach has been up to. This is an honorary proclamation recognizing September 15th to October 15th, 2025, as National Hispanic Heritage Month, whereas the city of Arroyo Grande is welcoming, inclusive, and dedicated to improving the quality of life for those who live, work, and visit here. And whereas what began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Johnson, and was expanded by President Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting September 15th, the United States observes Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the histories, cultures, and contributions of those whose ancestors came to America from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas the purpose of Hispanic Heritage Month is to create awareness of the contributions of people of Hispanic heritage to American culture. Many people of Hispanic heritage serve as civil rights leaders and community organizers, politicians, teachers, journalists, first responders, artists, healthcare professionals, athletes, inventors, entertainers, and more. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is tied to the celebration of the rich tapestry of our community and reflects an array of distinct cultures. Whereas Arroyo Grande is fortunate to count among its population a large number of residents of Spanish and Latin American descent who grow businesses, offer innovative ideas, strengthen our economy, create jobs, and contribute to our daily lives. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Karen Ray Russom, Mayor of the city of Arroyo Grande, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2025, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in Arroyo Grande, and invite the community to learn more about the Hispanic culture, people, traditions, and values that have positively enriched our community.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Demetrio Morales Salazar. I currently serve as the Vice President of Latino Outreach Council. Although I wasn't born with the council when it was established in 1994, we have continued and will continue to promote our Latin culture. What we bring to the table, it has something written down, but it doesn't mean anything when it's not coming from the heart. So what we do is we bridge the gaps from our community members into the resources that we have, and we can connect within our local community members amongst each other. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And like you, I always like the speaking from the heart, too. All right, this takes us to item 6B, City Manager Communications. Mr. Downing?
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you very much, and members of the council. I'm actually really glad there's a number of people in the room because I have a number of updates for you and the community this evening. First, we did want to alert the public to a potential scam targeting Arroyo Grande water customers. This is kind of late-breaking news. So individuals have been reportedly visiting residents and falsely claiming that the city's water is contaminated, advising them not to drink the water, and then attempting to sell water treatment products based on these false claims. Please be assured that the city of Arroyo Grande water is safe to drink and is continually monitored and tested to meet all health and safety standards. If anybody remembers the boil water notice, that's the kind of thing you get when our water's not safe to drink. We haven't issued one, so our water's perfectly fine. We will be putting out a press release advising the public of the same, so wanted to make everyone aware of that. The Arroyo Grande Police Department will be joining the San Luis Obispo County Sheriff's Office this Saturday at Madonna Inn Meadows for Sheriff's Family Day from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. This is a great event for the family to meet first responders from all different agencies throughout the county. And you also get to see up close and personal some really specialized equipment, so that's a really exciting opportunity as well. On the other half of our public safety world, the Five Cities Fire Authority has remained busy supporting our allied agencies this summer and all the different things, including the Madre Fire, the Gifford Fire, the recent industrial accident in Guadalupe, the vegetation fire in Sea Canyon on Friday. Luckily, that one got under control really quickly. And then they are currently deployed to the Garnett Fire in the Dinkie Creek area, which if anybody's familiar with that area, is a beautiful space, and it's terrible that that's happening. But it's important to note that all of our stations and engine companies have been fully staffed this entire summer, and it's a very active fire season, so we thank everybody for their cooperation in getting their weeds and abating their weeds and keeping defensible space. Now, if any of you want to be one of those staff members with the AGPD or the FCFA, we are currently recruiting to fill positions in both public safety departments. So applications will be accepted for the police trainee position through Thursday, September 11th, and for the firefighter position through Monday, September 15th. You can visit the city's website or governmentjobs.com for more information. And now for everyone in the audience. The city will be launching its first community survey through Flashvote later this week, and the first topic is city communications. So how can we better communicate with all of you? There is still time to join and be included on upcoming surveys that will help shape the decisions that impact your community. So you can sign up by following the link on the city's website. You can pick up a flyer in the lobby, or better yet, you can take out your phone real quick, scan that QR code, and sign up right from that QR code. Right now, we have about 405 signups as of earlier this afternoon. And then it is officially the NFL season. And while they traditionally ask, are you ready for some football? I'm going to ask, are you ready for some concerts? So first, we have the final Slow County Band performance of the summer. That will be at Rancho Grande Park this Thursday, September 11th, from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. Music will be a commemoration of the 9/11 tragedy, as well as a variety of cover songs as well. So that's this Thursday, Rancho Grande Park, 6:30 to 7:30. And then this Sunday, September 14th, is the Groove Collective. They'll hit us with some R&B and funk tunes at the Summer Concert Series, where the Boys and Girls Club will be the featured nonprofit this Sunday from 1:00 to 3:00 with beer and wine on sale by the Rotary Club of Arroyo Grande. And you can get your pizza from the Pizza Trolley, Central Coast Pizza Trolley, that is. And you can get some ice-cold lemonade from Slow Cal Squeeze. And then lastly, I am sad to say it, it's our Last Summer Concert Series coming up here pretty quick. On September 21st, with the Garden Party, they'll be playing hits from the '60s and '70s, as well as folk and rock tunes. The Harvest Festival will be the featured nonprofit because Harvest Festival's right around the corner. And then you can secure your world-class hot dogs, served up by the South County Historical Society. And you might be able to get some beer and wine from the Rotary if you're lucky. So with that, Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I do have a quick question for you, and it's more of a, I think I know the answer already, but it's more of a public service announcement. When people are selling things door-to-door, they're technically required to get a permit from AGPD. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if you are wondering if someone is legit who's coming to your door and telling you something about the city of Arroyo Grande, ask them for their permit. And then please, if they don't have one, report them to the non-emergency line for the AGPD. That's 5110, right? 5110, right? Thank you. Chief Culver's in the back. He gives me the thumbs up that it's 5110. So not 911, of course, but let AGPD know that there are people out there that potentially need to be talked to, and let them know what the rules are, or at worst, if it's a scam, we'll take care of it. So make sure that you ask them for that permit if somebody's coming door-to-door. Hold on just one minute. Sorry, it's, thank you for that. 473-5110, right? Yeah, yeah, well, yes, we're all 805s. Thank you. So anyway, going on from there, any other comments or questions from the city manager? Okay, so we'll move on to city council reports, which we don't have tonight. So that takes us straight to community comments and suggestions. I see a few of you are here tonight, but this is the part where you come forward on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you would like to come to the podium to talk to the council about items that are not on tonight's agenda, then please come forward to keep your items or your comments brief to 60 seconds or less, and please address the council as one body. So if you have things not on tonight's agenda, please come forward. It is on the agenda. All right, seeing no one, I'll check in with the city clerk and see if there's anyone online.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. We have one raised hand. Shad Anderson?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to address the council.
Okay, Shad, and this is for items not on the agenda, correct?
Yes, ma'am. I believe that the question of pickleball courts being taken over in the Soto Sports Complex are not on the agenda. I'd just like to voice the opinion.
That is on the agenda, and not only that, you get a bonus two minutes for waiting a little bit because it's 60 seconds right now, and it's three minutes when you're on the agenda. So if we could just hold you off a little bit, and we'll bring you in when we are discussing that item.
Apologies. Thank you.
No worries. There are no other raised hands.
Thank you. So all closed community comments, take us to items nine. This is our consent agenda tonight, and tonight we have quite a few of these on the agenda. We have items 9A through 9... I don't have my glasses on. 9I, I can never see the difference between an I and a J on these things. I will be asking that 9F be taken for separate consideration because I have a conflict on that. But other than that, does anyone else have any item to be pulled or anything to have questions about? Okay, so we'll go ahead and open up public comment. Now again, I know there's a lot of new people here. This is items 9A through 9I. That is not pickleball and tennis. So if you'd like to comment on any of the items that begin with the number nine, now would be your time. Okay, and seeing no one here, again, we'll check in online.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment on items beginning with nine, please raise your hand.
Hang on, wait. Whoa, 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 please. I want to be very clear. There is a process here. So if you have a question, I'll open public comment for these. Public comment is open. We can't yell from the audience. You can come to the dais. Each one gets one turn. So let's let the city clerk finish, and then if you would like to make public comment on items 9A through 9I, you can do that as soon as she's done talking.
Okay, there are no raised hands.
Okay, so if you have a question about items 9A through 9I, please come to the podium so people at home can hear you. And if, hold on just a second. Could you please turn on the...
9I, I don't even know what you're talking about.
There are agendas in the back. There's agenda, thank you, our, thank you. And they're also posted online. Chief Culver, you're awesome. Thank you. He just brought them in. Y'all, you don't need to do that because the next item's going to be 11A. So just one moment, and we'll be right there, okay? So I'll close public comment on items nine, and we'll bring it back to the council. And again, begging the council's understanding, please pull 9F for separate consideration.
I will move to approve items 9A through 9I without 9F.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Maravelia?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Russom?
Yes, and then 9F?
I will move to approve 9F.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Can we get a roll call again, please?
Councilmember Maravelia?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Lowe?
Yes. All right, thank you. So that ends items nine. We have no items 10, so it's a good thing that you're all here because we are now at item 11A. So before we get into this, I'm going to announce it, and I'm going to explain a little bit about process because we've got some new people here, and I want to make sure that we have an orderly and civil meeting. So this is the Soto Sports Complex Master Plan and Pickleball Multi-Use Court Request Discussion. This is going to be a discussion about the Soto Sports Complex and the pickleball and tennis courts. Here's how this will go. First, the staff will give their presentation. That is not the time for anybody to be yelling from the audience or asking questions, okay? So they're going to give their presentation, then that shifts to the council for us to ask questions of staff if we need clarification on anything in the staff report or anything that comes up during the, I guess, the printed staff report and the public hearing presentation. Then you'll hear me say, now I will open public comment, and that's when it shifts to you. And you can file in an orderly fashion right up the center. Each person will come to the dais. There is a lighted timer on the podium up here. You have three minutes, and not three minutes and one second. And there are a lot of people here, so I just want to tell you ahead of time, if you get to three minutes, I'm going to cut you off. So please be brief if you can, and we want to be fair to all people, that everybody gets the same amount of time. You don't have to use three minutes, but you get a maximum of three minutes. Then once that's done, if you ask questions, that's fine. I will be taking notes as you are, as you're talking, so we're listening to what your input is. But if you're asking questions, don't look to the staff or us for an answer. I'll be writing them down. Once public comment is closed, I will ask staff to comment on the questions that we have collected. At that point, once comment is closed, there's no more raising hands, no yelling from the audience. That's when it shifts to us, the council. Now, we've got to sit, think, discuss, and deliberate, and decide how to move forward, okay? So I'd also like to ask, when we get to public, and I'll remind you when we get there again, when we get to public comment, please don't talk while other people are talking. It's really important that the council can concentrate on each and every person, and we can concentrate on staff. So I know it's going to be tempting to lean over to the side, to the person that you might be sitting with, to have a conversation about what you've heard or what you're about to say. Please don't do that because it's really distracting for us because we are really concentrating up here. We're trying to do the people's business. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to staff, and we can hear the staff report on item 11A.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Again, you're the city manager. I wanted to give you a little background as to what we're here to do tonight because I know there's been a lot of discussion on pickleball versus tennis. However, the primary purpose of the item that was scheduled in front of you this evening is talking about the process to develop the Soto Sports Complex Master Plan. This is something that's been on the radar for a number of years. It was included as one of the projects on your capital improvement program this last budget cycle. And so we had scheduled, Director Balkan and I had scheduled this for tonight's hearing. At one of the recent city council meetings, a request by a member of the pickleball community was brought up, asking to agendize for discussion whether to move forward with the request made by a pickleball group to convert some tennis courts to multi-use courts so that they could be shared with pickleball. So while that is on the agenda, the primary purpose is to get the council's authorization to move forward with the plan that staff has put together on the development of the Soto Sports Complex Master Plan. So I wanted to set that stage for the council and for the community at this point. And with that, I'll turn it over to Director Balkan.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you so much. My name is Sheridan Balkan. I'm your Director of Recreation Services, and I just wanted to thank everybody for their passion and for coming out tonight to share your vision for our future of recreation and parks. Moving on, the Soto Sports Complex is an 18-acre community recreation facility that is located at 1275 Ash Street. The complex provides seven seasonal sports fields for softball, baseball, soccer, and football, including four tennis courts, four pickleball courts, a concessions building, a meeting room, public restrooms, and a community garden with 24 plots. We also have two stormwater retention basins, and the complex serves neighbors, local and traveling teams, regional tournaments, as well as hosting community events. And here is an overview of Soto Sports Complex, inclusive of Elm Street Park. And immediately adjacent to the sports complex is Elm Street Park, a 3.2-acre facility. The park includes Kiwanis Inclusive Playground, the only off-leash dog park in the Five Cities area, a gazebo with barbecue facilities, and an open grass area for sports and events. Following the demolition of the Markham Millis Community Center in early 2025, the site now includes a mobile office for recreation services, portable restrooms, and 34 parking spaces. Here is Elm Street Park. In February of this year, staff presented the results of the Community Priorities Survey, which highlighted recreation activities and additional pickleball courts among the community's top four priorities. Building on that feedback, in May, the council advanced these priorities by approving a 10-year capital improvement program which dedicates $275,000 in fiscal year 2526 for the development of a comprehensive master plan for the Soto Sports Complex and Elm Street Park. This master plan will proactively address connectivity, community center opportunities, and much-needed infrastructure improvements, ensuring these facilities continue to serve our residents well into the future. In order to advance the master plan, council direction is needed on several components. The appropriate community engagement tools, such as Flashvote surveys and workshops, or whether the plan should include a recreation services office or a broader community center facility, confirmation of infrastructure priorities such as restrooms, parking, lighting, and spectator safety, and the inclusion of pedestrian connectivity throughout the complex. Separately, though related to the Soto Sports Master Plan, as was mentioned earlier, council recently asked staff to present a discussion about the potential of converting two tennis courts at Soto Sports Complex into multi-use courts for both pickleball and tennis. As the pickleball and tennis courts are within Soto Sports Complex, tonight's discussion will help guide priorities and efforts. Pickleball was first introduced in Arroyo Grande in 2014 as a pilot program and has since grown significantly with over 220 active club members this year. Tennis also continues to serve an important role through local play, youth camps, and regional tournaments. Both sports remain active in the community and nationally, with tennis participation increasing 8% in 2024, and pickleball identified as the fastest-growing sport in the United States, having expanded by over 20% in the last five years. Due to high demand and extended wait times for pickleball play, there is an interest in converting two existing tennis courts into four multi-use courts. The estimated cost is $12,000, which will cover striping and portable nets. While multi-use courts would increase flexibility and maximize limited space, they may also create operational challenges, including greater strain on restrooms and parking and potential conflicts between tennis and pickleball users. As directed by, as directed, staff has prepared several options for council's consideration regarding the multi-use court request. Staff's recommendation is to defer installation until the master plan process is complete. This approach will help ensure that improvements are coordinated as part of a larger plan rather than piecemealed so that future opportunities for other uses are not limited. In conclusion, staff recommends that council confirm the next steps for implementation of the Soto Sports Master Plan, review and provide direction on the proposed multi-use court conversion, and determine that the actions under consideration are exempt from CEQA. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Now it shifts to the council, for the council to ask questions of staff. So first, I'll look to my right. Do you have any questions?
Just a couple of quick ones. Thank you for that presentation, Ms. Balkan. Could you, could you outline the scope of the master plan being for, I believe it's both for Soto and Soto Sports Complex and Elm Street Park? Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. And then, do you have a schedule for the master plan yet?
So the master plan is scheduled to begin in October 25, and the scope of work is this is our first step in that process. So defining the timeline, defining the method of communication, and defining what will be included is where we are beginning.
Is there a goal for completion roughly? Like, is it a one-year process or a two-year process?
The goal is to complete the project in 2526.
In the same fiscal year that it begins?
Correct.
So that would be like by July of 26?
By June 30th of 2026.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Guthrie, any questions?
So I'm looking at, in looking at the projected time, I'm also worried about the schedule. I see we have the plan, then we have, we have money set aside for the design, $600,000 for the design of whatever building we're going to put there. And then two more years of saving up a million and a half dollars, which is kind of an interesting number considering that we've spent $600,000 to design it. So why I say we wouldn't be making any improvements until 2829 at the earliest. And I'm just wondering if you can confirm that.
The $600,000 also includes the installation of restrooms, but you're correct. We would have that time gap in order to find either a partner or funding sources to help build your council's direction for a community service building or community building or recreation services office.
Okay, so I thought I read that we were looking at a building that included the restrooms. That, so the restrooms are part of the $600,000?
Correct.
And then related to the pickleball courts, so I understand that, what amount of time do you think it does take to convert them back and forth? That for staff or whoever's doing it, I know the pickleball people do a lot of their own stuff, but to convert it back and forth between the two uses?
I believe it would just be a matter of setting up the nets, so...
And taking them down?
And taking them down.
On the other side.
Correct.
So we're leaving the tennis net in place?
Correct.
Okay.
I can go back to that if you'd like to see.
Yeah, that's...
So the net stays in the middle. The two courts would be on either end.
Okay, those are my questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Maravelia?
Just to kind of add on to the timeframe question, would we have, the staff's recommendation right now is to wait until we have at least the master plan in place to make a decision on the pickleball tennis situation. That would really, that wouldn't be in 2028, though. That would be in like June 30, 2026, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Just double-checking on that. And I would assume part of that master plan process would involve some pretty, looking at statistics and seeing what usage looks like in terms of tennis, in terms of pickleball, in terms of everything that we're looking at within the center of, you know, children's activities or senior activities, or all of the above and more.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Downing, I'm not sure Sheridan can answer this question. It didn't occur to me until just, I got excited during, at the beginning of this. When's the last time that the council directed a master plan look at Soto Sports Complex?
I don't have an exact date off the top of my head, but I've been with the city for, since 2010, and I don't think it's happened in that amount of time.
And I since 2005, and I don't think we have. I don't think council's directed that. So that's, that was an honest question, but I'm very excited about that, so I'm slipping in a comment. So I didn't think about, until you said it, Sheridan, during the, during your presentation, about a parking issue. And we know that that parking is really restricted there. So what I didn't see, I mean, I see parking and access improvements there. Are we talking about adding parking potentially as part of the... So what I didn't see, I mean, I see parking and access improvements there. Are we talking about adding parking potentially as part of this plan?
Absolutely. The, the park is highly utilized between the complex and Elm Street Park, and people are constantly looking for places to park. So the current spaces that we have now are not sufficient. There's often days that I arrive that I'm parking on the street or that people are circling around and having to park in other areas to be able to access, whether it be the courts or the fields.
So at its highest usage, if we were to convert two more, do what you have on the screen right now, how would that affect parking? Where, and I, I don't, or is that the kind of thing we're going to study as part of this?
It would be part of the study, but when you look at the game of pickleball, there's four players per game. So if you had two more courts, then you would have eight players on the court and then additional people that would be waiting to rotate in. So you would have an additional, at least 12 to 20 people that would be coming to the park to play on the multi-use courts.
So forgive me because I'm a fish and I don't do things that require shoes. So when, when the, I, I guess what I'm asking is when it's at its full capacity right now, I'm not there during that time. I don't observe it myself. Is that, is it already so heavily impacted that we just don't have parking for that?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I have a, a maybe this is for Mr. Downing or maybe for Mr. Robeson. So I've learned a little bit from the Traffic Way Project that there's apparently some magical tape you people put out here that redoes striping. So my question is, is there some sort of magical tape that would be similar to what we use here, that could be semi-permanent so that we could test this out without a full conversion that would allow us to look at it prior to waiting a whole year before we get the situation settled after the master plan comes back?
Are you referring to tape on the courts?
Yes.
Yes. There is tape that's temporary that can be placed on the courts.
And so would that be a way that we could do this as a trial method?
It could be done as a trial. I know that Grover Beach did that initially as a trial, and there were situations that they experienced where people pulled the tape because they were not in support of those courts.
I see. All right. Thank you for that. That's, I'm, thank you. All right. So any other questions? Yes, sir.
Quick redirect. So, so looking at the, the timing here, the $600,000 is actually in 20, 26, '27. So it'd be June of '27 that the bathrooms are done?
Correct.
Okay.
Because we would need, we would need the time to be able to identify where the bathrooms should go.
I totally understand why. It's just, I, I heard someone say that it was June of '26.
I meant the master plan would be done by the, by June of '26.
So the bathrooms won't be in place, and so therefore the pickleball courts will not be converted until the bathrooms are in place? As based on your recommendation?
Correct.
And until the parking is in place?
Correct.
Okay. Just so the pickleball courts are somewhere down the road, because parking's not going to be easy up there.
Right. So identifying a plan now, we would be able to accommodate what your council decides tonight.
Hey, one follow-up question. Is there any way to accelerate that timing, considering the public demand? Or is that just going to be what it's going to be, and it's going to take nine months to do that?
That may come back to the city manager for response, but I also would like to share, just from my experience, that there would have to be priorities set by your council.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Robeson, Assistant City Manager, Public Works Director. A decision like that would impact our CIP schedule, so we would have to maneuver, adjust.
We have a lot of new people here. Can you define CIP so people know what you're talking about?
Capital Improvement Projects. They are projects like streets, sidewalk repairs, public facility repairs, infrastructure repairs like storm drains, and also facilities like we're talking about today. So we have a set schedule. We, we get really deep into that schedule. Your council's seen that schedule. Doesn't mean you can't move it, but it will take some thoughtfulness on our part to make sure that we are moving through the sequence of scoping and scheduling once again to make sure we're achieving the goals of your council.
And to add on to that, just for context, so we have found over the years that about eight to 10 capital improvement projects per fiscal year is really what staff can handle. Now, there's some caveats to that about differences in staff, and, and we have a really great engineering team with us right now. But this fiscal year, you have 25 capital improvement projects slated to be done by June 30th, 2026. So we're doubling what we typically say we can accomplish. And that has projects that are currently in process, so they're carried over from the previous year. Pardon me, my getting frog in my throat. But that, that's why, that's part of the reason why staff is recommending not moving forward with, with converting anything tonight is because that then has to adjust everything else. And to be quite frank, we would have to drop something else off the CIP list in order to accommodate this add-on. Could we look at how to schedule the, if we get the master plan done in, by June 30th, 2026, can we look at scheduling the restrooms and everything to make sure that infrastructure's in place faster? Yes, we will always look at those scheduling conflicts, but there's so many different pieces of bids and designs and then RFPs for construction and just timelines that we have to build all of that into sequence as well.
So is the Soto Master Plan, and forgive me if I missed this in the staff report, this is being done entirely in-house? Or is this being done with a consultant or both?
This would be done with a consultant and with staff.
Okay, got it. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. One more question. With regard to parking, the staff report mentions that at peak times with pickleball, there's quite a few people waiting, like more than the typical time. So those people are there already, is that correct? Meaning they've, if, however they've arrived, they've walked, they've ridden their bikes, or they've parked?
Correct.
Okay. So, so adding courts in a configuration like this would help address the existing demand. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
I have one more question. Sorry. If the survey, if we decide to go forward with this master plan and the survey information shows that there's like a clear direction that the community wants to go, could we possibly do a conversion like this in a year for now? Or would you still recommend waiting until the bathrooms and the parking and everything like that are done?
So we, we can obviously change and, and be nimble and roll with the punches, however the council directs staff to do it. That's, that's the underlying theme. We're just trying to let you know what the, what the current constraints are.
Right.
If you tell us to go forward, we'll find a way to, to do it and move things around accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
What would you have to eliminate? Because I, I want to, I want to understand what that means before I start entertaining that idea.
I was afraid you were going to ask me that question. It, it's really hard to say. We have a number of different, different things on there. We have, obviously Traffic Way Bridge is our number-one priority at this moment in time. We have to get that thing done and open and everybody back to normal. On the heels of that, next spring-ish, we're looking at the House of Young and Road Complete Streets Plan. That's going to be another major infrastructure project in the city. We're also, the city council's prioritized $5 million a year in street paving for the next 10 years. So we, we have a lot of fundamental infrastructure projects that we will need to do. I would have to take a closer look at our schedule, both this fiscal year and next fiscal year, to figure out in consultation with Mr. Robeson and our city engineer to make sure that we know what can be delayed, what can't be delayed, what, what's... I don't want to delay something that would then set us up for either increased costs because of deferred maintenance or anything like that.
Okay, so what you're saying is you don't know yet, and, okay, fair enough, fair enough. All right. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, this was off my list and I didn't get to it. So there, there's a lot of stuff here about, really about what I used to think of as Elm Street Park, and I, I, I didn't realize until this time that the courts are actually considered to be part of Soto Sports Complex. What, what are the other things for Soto Sports Complex that you're thinking of? Are, are we still thinking of the Field of Dreams ideal with the whole, whole nine yards around building, building six baseball diamonds out there?
No, we are looking at restrooms, parking, lighting, inclusion of the basins, which their basin number two is in need potentially of a new lining. So that is a capital improvement project that would be able to be scheduled along with the master plan. So it could be done in conjunction with other projects, so it would save money. Also safe spectator areas, and then pedestrian walkways that you could travel through the park, through the complex safely if you were going from the playground, for example, to Santos Field, and you didn't want to have to go all the way onto the street to go up and around. You could go through the park, potentially connecting to Bakeman Lane as well, and go back into those neighborhoods. So that is what we are looking at.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Now, this is the part where it shifts to you. So again, as soon as I open up public comment, you can, it doesn't matter if you go first or last, we're going to hear everybody. Remember that you need to keep your eye on the timer that's on the podium. It's green. If it's green, you're within your first two and a half minutes. If it's yellow, it's giving you a 30-second warning. And when it's red, that's the part where I'm going to step in and say, "Thank you very much." And then we'll go to the next speaker. Also, we want to make absolutely sure that if there are 100 people on one side and one people on the other, that every single person feels comfortable coming to the dais. So please hold your applause. You are welcome to show us your applause. I see many of you as rackets. Please don't hit anybody near you, but if you want to raise them, then you can. But again, the silence matters because we want to make sure it's, it's terrifying for people, many people, to come speak to the council and stand in front of us like this. Please don't make it more difficult than it needs to be. I know this community to be wonderful and thoughtful and kind, so please keep that in mind as you come to the, to the, to the podium and speak your mind, be passionate, and then be kind to the person behind you. So with that, I will open public comment.
Do I need to press anything down here?
You don't, but just keep an eye on that timer. You can start as soon as she's got that rolling.
Okay, this is kind of like Law &amp; Order. I watch Law &amp; Order. It's kind of like this. My, do you want our names?
And everyone, if you would please be quiet as the speaker is speaking, it's very important that we are able to listen carefully to each speaker.
Do we need to state our name?
That would be helpful if you would like to.
Okay.
It is not required.
Okay, I will anyway. My name is Chris Hickey. I've been a resident of Arroyo Grande for over 35 years, and I played tennis for many, many of those years, and I really have questions. Are those appropriate at this time? Okay. One comment I do want to make is that my sister-in-law and I have played tennis for many years. We started playing at the Mento Court, and then it was done into the multi-use facility. We never pulled the tape. Just want to make that clear. Number two, I play tennis. We play tennis in the morning. And there are a few pickleball players, some tennis players at the same time. When is the demand, the high demand for the pickleball courts? When is the high demand for the tennis courts? That was never presented. And I'd like to know, by demand, what does that mean? Does that mean from 1:00 in the afternoon to 5:00 in the evening? For 45 minutes every day, twice a week, whatever? I think that needs to be published. And then finally, my question is, was, are these courts going, these multi-use courts going to be permanent? Or are they temporary? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Helen Jacobson. Been playing tennis since high school. Okay, so here's the deal. I think if you don't play, that there's maybe some things you don't know. There's 137% more people injured in pickleball than tennis. That came from the news, although I'm sure if you looked it up online, you'll find a, a variety of things. But that actually was on the news report. So that's something to consider. I have personally never seen any small kids, like five, eight-year-olds, on the pickleball courts. So apparently, it's not like bringing our youth in and teaching them a valuable sport that they can continue to use the rest of their life. By the way, I play three times a week and I'm 80, so you can take this sport with you forever. And you know, I'm not sure about pickleball, but tennis has been around for 2,000 years. It's not a fad, and it's not going to go away. So on the courts that you've already converted, whenever you didn't convert them all the way and you had the mobile nets and stuff, it's very hard for a tennis player to distinguish those lines. When you've got the pickleball lines on our tennis courts, it's, it makes play very difficult. At least for me, it does. And the parking, of course, is a horrible issue. People that come to play pickleball, there's like 20 people waiting to rotate in, and then after they play, they play again. So tennis players show up, play their match, and go home. So that has a lot to do with the parking. So I don't know how many courts you've already converted or have been converted in this whole area. If maybe somebody could address that. If it's going to cost you $12,000 to convert a court and you want to do it temporarily, how much is it going to cost you to do it temporarily? Because you still have to buy the nets, the mobile nets, and you've got to have the striping put down, whether it's permanent or whatever. So you might want to look into that. How much you want to pay to not have it done permanently, which we're not wanting you to do it permanently. Okay. How many courts are in the planning? And pickleball is such a hot item right now, maybe they could do a fundraiser. Maybe you could allot money from the city to actually build them courts and quit taking our courts away. You could just build them some pickleball courts all for themselves. I have friends that are pickleball players, and I love them. Don't misunderstand me. So at any rate, that's about it. It's a lifetime sport, and it's also considered, if you want to look this up, one of the best sports to maintain your athletic ability and your mobileness and everything else. And it, when you play tennis, you run to the ball. When you play tickleball, you're doing this. You're jabbing. I think that's why.
Thank you very much.
John Quinn. I'm an Arroyo Grande resident, city council mayor. I'm here to oppose the elimination of the tennis courts at the park. I play at Soto two to three times a week. I was there Tuesday. All the tennis courts were full. Currently, there are four pickleball courts and four tennis courts. The average time to play pickleball is 15 to 25 minutes. The average time to play tennis matches an hour and a half to two and a half hours. Even during the busiest times of pickleball play, players typically wait no more than 15 minutes. When you show up at a busy tennis court, you wait an hour or more for a court. In the South County, there are 18 public pickleball courts and nine public tennis courts. And if you're going to play high school or college tennis, you need public courts. Everyone knows Venus and Serena Williams. They played on public courts. The AG High School courts are not available during school hours or during the boys' and girls' tennis seasons. That eliminates them for six months of the year. The popularity, the popularity of tennis has increased every year over the last five years. I looked that up. Our local private tennis club, Avala Bay Club, is no longer accepting tennis members because they are full. I couldn't even join a private tennis club if I wanted to. Four courts are the minimum that you need to hold a tennis tournament. We actually need more tennis courts in the South County and improve lighting for the tennis courts at Soto. The lighting on the pickleball court, pickleball courts are superior to the existing tennis courts lighting. If they improved the current courts lighting, we would have more nighttime play. Right now, I've talked to the city several times on Court One, I believe. One of the lights doesn't even work, and plus there are these old incandescent lights, not the LED lights that they have on the pickleball courts. I occasionally play pickleball, and therefore I'm not against pickleball. It's a very fun activity. The parking at Soto is insufficient for more pickleball courts. You guys mentioned this between all the fields and everything else. There's not enough parking now. Other locations in Arroyo Grande can better accommodate pickleball. Rancho Grande Park, Struther Park would also benefit, would benefit from pickleball courts and can accommodate the parking. The question I have, if there is a conversion, and I get off work at 5:00 and I head over there on Tuesday, Thursday, which I do now, can I bump pickleball court, the people off the pickleball court? Because let's say there's two tennis courts full and there's four courts full of pickleball. Do I get some type of priority? How do we manage that? And not to mention, the, the lines are confusing. They make... to mention, this, the lines are confusing. They make it hard for players and they make it especially hard for young players to dis- distinguish between pickleball and tennis. Um, again, as mentioned before, we should not be losing tennis courts and the opportunity for young players to learn a lifelong sport that is considered the healthiest of all sports. Thank you.
Good evening, city council. My name's Adam Hoffman. I'm a local Arroyo Grande resident. I'll try to keep this brief. Um, I'm pretty much here just to plead with the council and the local pickleball community to just please build your own facilities. If, if the sport's so popular, I think that the local pickleball community has the, the resources and the sway to build a dedicated pickleball courts. I, I've seen what happens in Mentone. I used to live in Grover Beach. Mentone becomes temporary, then shared use, and then it becomes a pickleball court. That's just the way it goes up and down California and, and all over the country, unfortunately. Um, so yeah, I would just ask that we please build, I'm, I'm all for pickleball on dedicated courts. I just don't want the tech, tennis courts to be taken away. And, uh, the parking is the only other issue. I would say right now, given the parking that's available, the pickleball players could take up like seventy-five to eighty percent of the parking. And that doesn't include people that wanna use the dog park, the playground, everything else that's there. Um, and the only other thing I'd add is that the lighting at both the high school and, and the current tennis courts is not up to standard of, of what like you would use in this century. So yeah, just to build, figure out a way to build dedicated pickleball courts as many as we need. You know, pickleball is, is a social sport, so I think the waiting your turn to play and playing over and over again and having some people waiting in queue is kinda part of the sport. Um, and not so much with tennis. Tennis, we like it to be a little bit quieter and not have all those lines on the court, but I'm just here to plead with the pickleball community and the council to please build your own facilities. And I'm all in favor of pickleball, just, just not taking over the tennis courts. And that's it.
My name is...
Thank you very much. Have a good night. Appreciate it.
My name is Leslie Kaplan. I'm an Arroyo Grande resident and I commend the council for trying to develop recreational opportunities in our city. Efforts to grow those opportunities should be with the goal of keeping communities harmonious, not to grow one area of interest to the disruption or detriment of others. According to the memorandum dated today, um, by the recreation director, the request to convert two tennis courts into multi-use courts was as a result in part to pickleball volunteers describing tennis court use minimal during pickleball club times. I would like to submit that tennis court use is strong and in demand. It also states multi-use courts that accommodate both tennis and pickleball provide flexibility and maximize use of limited park space, providing the ability to meet the rising demand for pickleball while maintaining traditional tennis play. The inherent differences between the two sports, the necessity to alter tennis courts to accommodate pickleball, and needing to address before proceeding the distractions due to noise differences between the two sports definitely does not allow for traditional tennis play. Spending an estimated twelve thousand dollars to convert the tennis courts could also be monies potentially wasted if and when temporary paint lines and equipment would be needed to be removed, excuse me, needed to be removed. I would like to see twelve thousand dollars fill some potholes in that parking lot myself. Building new pickleball courts might be a good thing for new pickleball players. Taking away existing tennis courts from current players is not a good thing. According to the numbers submitted in the memorandum, there were, there are thirteen hundred and thirty-five AG club members in the AG Pickleball Club. Only two hundred and seventy-nine are listed as residents, only twenty-one percent. I respectfully request you keep our tennis courts, tennis courts, and perhaps look for future pickleball sites in surrounding areas where the pickleball membership percentages are greater than here in Arroyo Grande. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and honorable, uh, council and staff. I'm Nancy Allison and a lot of the points I was gonna talk about have already been discussed. Uh, but I do wanna second that, that the Soto, um, tennis courts and pickleball are used regionally. So this is not just affecting Arroyo Grande, um, residents. There are pros that give lessons through Park and Recs. The tennis players tend to learn tennis when they're younger. Um, and those courts are used by Central Coast Women's Tennis League, which I've been part of for many years. And, um, and basically Soto hosts, um, hosts, um, a mixer and they're, they're with other parks and also private tennis clubs all through the central coast. You have to have four courts because you have, you know, four doubles teams that are playing. So that would be affected. Um, the tennis community has already lost one tennis court to pickleball at Soto. Uh, we also, I did a little study just in five cities. The tennis community has lost six courts roughly in the last five to ten years. And the pickleball players have gained twenty pickleball courts. So when Grover Beach, you know, decided to make the, um, the Mentone Basin part, court, a, you know, a multi-one, it, I went over to try to play tennis. It is impossible to play tennis on a court that has painting of other smaller courts on it with lines going everywhere. So no one played tennis on it. It basically just got converted. And now it's four more pickleball courts. So, so there is ample opportunity for pickleball players to play on the central coast. And then meanwhile, tennis courts, because they've all been converted, so much conversion, there's just a real lack of public and even, I belong to Avala Bay Club. We lost one of our tennis courts to four pickleball courts. You can't get a court there, you know, and you're paying a couple hundred dollars a month. So it's a real shortage of tennis opportunity. People have already talked about, you know, the benefits of tennis. Um, it is a lifelong sport. It is a healthiest sport. And I guess the question I would have to you is, why doesn't the city look at using a soccer field, a base, a basketball court, baseball fields, football, or the community gardens? Why does it always hit the tennis community to take the loss for pickleball's gain? So please, you know, please don't do this to us. You will not be making multi-use courts. You will be stealing two, two more tennis courts. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Susan Ritchie-Broucher. I am a public tennis court player, have been my whole life. I learned the game of tennis at, at the age of eight. I play exclusively on public tennis courts and I can't overstate the importance of that in a community. I play at Soto. I try to play at Soto two to three times a week. Uh, and I, and I get skunked a lot. It's a very, very well-used, well-loved, very nice. You should be proud of those tennis courts. They're, they're very, very good tenant, public tennis courts. Um, I wanna second what, uh, many of you had said. Converting, it seems like such a good idea to convert for multi-use because it sounds like you're really accommodating uh, everyone. It renders them useless for tennis. You will never see tennis players on a multi-use court. It's impossible to call the lines. You can't teach a young person to play on a multi-years court. And those courts at Soto are used for instruction as they should be. Um, I have a lot of pickleball friends. Pickleball is fun and it's easier to learn. And that, I think, is responsible for a large growth of, um, interest in, in the game of pickleball. Um, it's great. I want them to be able to play. I do not think it's, uh, the right thing to do or the right approach to rob the tennis players to appease that group. Uh, one thing I wanna point out is that the, the pickleball club, it, it's very fun, but they all descend on the pickleball courts at the same time because there's a window. And I just think there are a lot of creative ways that, uh, the window could be opened for different skill levels, the way tennis players do. We have A leagues and B leagues, et cetera. I, I, I think that there are ways to improve that so that the demand can be met. Thank you to your staff person for pointing out that tennis grew in twenty-twenty-three by eight percent over the previous year. Um, I wanna also point out that two, two-thirds of that growth are for people under thirty-five. Forty-five percent of new players are under the age of twenty-five. I believe that it is a community's ro- responsibility to, to, uh, to look at that when you're making your decisions like this. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Ronnie Glick. I'm a resident of Arroyo Grande, First, uh, Council District. I initially contacted this council because I am a pickleball player. I've been playing for about three years. And I got increasingly frustrated to be waiting and waiting for games and seeing unused tennis courts. And so I had been talking with staff at the city about the option of doing a temporary conversion. I do believe multi-use courts are a good compromise. And I wanna point out, we all were raised in gyms that were lined for basketball and volleyball and other sports, and we figured it out. This is really a similar experience. We can, as your staff report says on page four, have multi-use courts that respect both players of tennis and players of pickleball. And we can work out some of the differences about timing, et cetera. There are solutions and this is a really good interim step. I wanna point out a couple of things that your staff's mem- member said. We have over two-hundred-and-twenty members in the pickleball club. That's a lot of members and that's a substantial number that are citizens of Arroyo Grande. But we are also contributing and to the financial well-being of this community by paying for the courts, paying for the upkeep and maintenance, for the staff time. It is a net revenue positive for the city to have this club using these courts. And we can support through our dues and our membership, the funds to do this temporary exercise. Um, we also supported Measure O-six, the sales tax revenue. We had our own members who went and hung flyers on doors and talked to their fellow, fellow citizens about that. We are members of this community and we are helping to support this community financially, but we are asking for your help on an interim basis during the time when there's a, a really important plan for these co- this complex and, and the park. We're asking for your help for an interim solution that is not perfect for everybody. Not all pickleball players want temporary courts. Not all tennis players want pi- want pickleball courts painted on their tennis courts. But it's an interim solution that can work for everybody until such time as the city has the funding and, and all, and everything put together to build more courts. It's a very modest investment on a temporary solution that can help alleviate a real problem, a real-time problem. Um, I want you, uh, to, number one, ask your, your staff about the tennis use numbers during pickleball hours. We have this data. They have the data and they can show you that those tennis courts are empty during the time that we are out there playing pickleball. We cannot wait three to five years for this city to put new tennis courts, uh, new pickleball courts at this complex. If you think.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Bob Redlow. Um, first I wanna say thank you to Sheridan for the leadership in recreation. Um, I'm new to the community. I've only been here six years, which is pretty new around here. Uh, I, I'm a die-hard tennis player, uh, and I, I'm an addicted pickleball player. So I do both and I enjoy it. And I play tennis on Saturday and Sunday mornings and I go over and then play a little pickleball and I play pickleball during the week. Um, I've been involved in, um, uh, I come from the Bay Area. I've been involved in three other pickleball and tennis associations up there. In, uh, in all three cases, in Richmond, El Cerrito, and Hercules, uh, we did exactly this. We put in multi-use courts. Tennis players hated it. The pickleball players hated it. Um, and then a year later, we all, they were all a change to pickleball courts permanent. Um, and it's a waste of money to do multi-use courts. It just doesn't work out. Pickleball players, tennis players at the same time, who's gonna get it, who isn't? Who's gonna put the temporary? Who's gonna pick up the tape again? All that kinda stuff. We had all those issues. It all went to pickleball. So I wouldn't waste the money. Just do it. But I will say that, you know, we, a- as I understand it, we, we made one tennis court into four pickleball courts. I suggest we did, take one tennis court and make it permanent into three or four pickleball courts. It's, it's big enough, uh, to do that and that would be, uh, fine. I play pickleball. I, I play tennis, as I said, Saturday, Sunday, and sometimes at night during the week. I have no trouble getting a tennis court in this town. And if we, if the, uh, public tennis courts are filled, we go to the high school. There are no problems with tennis in this town. And I wish we had more tennis players for Saturday and Sunday, but people like me who are seniors, they seem to be waning out. Our knees are going and thank God for pickleball because we don't have to run so hard. So I just wanna urge you, uh, certainly we need more pickleball courts. Certainly we're in favor of the compromise, but it would be better and cheaper in the long run to just make permanent pickleball courts now and just take one tennis court. And I think that would be great. Thank you.
Does it start when I say, green light didn't come? Well, there it is, I guess. I'm Mike Furman, and first I wanna thank Sheridan and, and the staff. The tennis courts here are excellent. I also belong to the Avala Bay Club. The courts now at Arroyo Grande are superior to that of a private club. So they're really nice courts. So thank you. We appreciate it. I'm not gonna go over what everybody else is going over. I'd just like to add one more thing, and that is safety. If you're a tennis player, you've got all those lines on the court. When it gets damp, and boy, we know it's damp in the mornings a lot, and I play in the mornings, you can't stop. You just slide all over the place with all the damn tape and paint. So it's, it's really tough. I've tried it up in slow and you just are in danger of hurting yourself. So I'd say, please leave the tennis courts alone and, uh, we'll take it from there. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dana Evangelist. Uh, I was born in San Luis, raised here. Been playing tennis for fifty-four years. Um, I don't agree that to make the tennis courts into pickleball courts, cause with that money you're gonna use, you should just build a separate facility. Lay some concrete or asphalt where the surface it is and leave the tennis courts alone. Uh, sixteenth of a mile away, they have Mentone Basin. They converted that, that means there's eight pickleball courts within a si- five-minute drive. Ramona Park's gonna build a few more pickleball courts. And so there could be a total of like sixteen pickleball courts and we will have four tennis courts locally. When you put lines across, it makes it difficult to, 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 like the gentleman said, it gets slippery. You can't tell if it's in or out. Uh, uh, unless you play tennis, you understand. Tennis, you have to, to really concentrate on the ball because you could tell by the spin, by just hearing it. Pickleball's very loud, which has nothing against pickleball, but I don't think that you should take pi- tennis courts to put pickleball courts because it's in demand. Because tennis is a growing sport too. It's the most, one of the most popular sports in the world. Tennis is, pickleball's growing. Tennis has been around for over a hundred years. I don't think that, um, ten- tennis has played on multi-surfaces. Okay, if you're gonna take the pickleball courts, build a smaller tennis courts. We don't have enough as it is. We cannot go to, go to the high school to play during school hours because school's on its private property. Napoma Park, they had three tennis courts, which they took one away for pickleball courts. Now they have si- six pickleball courts and two tennis courts. So what are we supposed to do? People can't go to the high school to play because, like I said, it's private property. So I guess tennis players lose out so pickleball's, pickleball can gain. I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's fair that because it's in demand. Tennis is still growing too. People got, people get scholarships through tennis, not through pickleball. So, um, I don't think that, I think that if the money you're investing to build, to put the lines out, why don't you just put another slab somewhere and add more pickleball courts there? Why take the tennis courts away? I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's right. And, uh, there's a lot of tennis players who are very upset about this. You know, we're not gonna use the courts because we can't t- get to the lines. Anyway, I just wanted to say, my concern is that next thing you know, it'll be, they'll be, they'll be taking all the courts because it's popular. And I think that's right. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Katie McNeil and thank you for taking our comments, mayor and, uh, council members. I sent in a letter, so I won't repeat what I wrote, but I did wanna thank you for, um, being so responsive. I complained about a light not working in the parking lot and like within the next week or two, it was working. And the AED facility or, um, instrument that was put there, thank you. You know, safety for this community is, is so important and, um, I, I appreciate the opportunity. You guys have your work cut out for you to make this really difficult decision as, um, time progresses, but I, I do echo the sentiment to expand pickleball in this community. It is growing. Um, as a, as an introvert, you know, it's hard to come over here and talk, but it's also amazing to be able to go into a community where you do mingle with, um, people that are eighty, people that are forty, all walks of life, different, um, political backgrounds, different, um, heritage, different, um, occupations, and as I mentioned, ages. So I encourage you to, um, take the pickleballers seriously and see that this is a growing need for the community. And it really does make Arroyo Grande better. You're seeing that happening in Grover Beach and in other communities around, um, around the five cities area and elsewhere. I did wanna, uh, echo that someone, I think it was Ronnie, might have mentioned the income that the club produces at two hundred members, a hundred and sixty dollars a year. I believe that's about thirty thousand dollars a year that the pickleballers are bringing in to the city. So if that could be used... So if that could be used however you see fit, I do think that a permanent court is better. It's less confusing. Both sides are saying that. But, you know, as this council decides how to move forward, I encourage you to continue to support and expand pickleball in this community. Thank you very much.
I am William Ashley. I live in Arroyo Grande, and I assist with the volunteer program with the club pickleball, and I'm an active player. So I think really we need a master plan for the whole complex there, so I urge that be done and get input from everybody involved. As many people have said, often the pickleball courts are very crowded. There's waits of sometimes 20 minutes. You play for 15 minutes and wait for another 20 minutes, and we're not there to socialize and talk that whole time. We want to play. So we do need more pickleball courts. I think if there's a discussion about, are the courts being used and how much they're being used? There's surveillance cameras now. I think work, somebody could sit down and just make a graph and see how much usage there is, but I don't think that's the whole point. I hear what the tennis people say, and we need more pickleball courts. So I would urge that the council find a place to put them, maybe the master plan will do that, and I know community members will help donate money to put the slab down and have them built.
I'm from San Luis Obispo, but I played on the AG courts quite a bit with my friends who live in AG. And just, I would, I agree with what was said about the, you know, the multi-use doesn't really work for tennis players. And like, the lines for tennis are white, and then the other lines for pickleball are usually a lot brighter, and it's not equal. And it's just, you might as, it just really doesn't work for tennis. And in our community, we have some courts that were, that they said on Tuesdays and Wednesdays that tennis, they were multi-use, and tennis players could play there if they wanted to. But is a person like me going to go there and be like, okay, you know, you pickleball players have to leave now because, you know, it's really daunting to do something like that. So we just don't. And it's all over the county where really tennis players are so squeezed to find courts. And I'm part of Central Coast Women's Tennis League, and even we have teams that are just burgeoning with members, that have big rosters. We could have more teams, but we don't have courts to host the teams. Like, our team, we have two Sinsheimer teams, and we're, our team was actually looking at the AG courts to move our team to the AG courts so that we could have a team there. And so when we heard about this, we were like, really concerned because that plan, you need four courts to host in the tennis league, and that would make it impossible to host there. So my kids, I learned on public tennis courts. My dad taught me. My kids learned on public tennis courts. My son went to a clinic on the AG tennis courts and learned there and went to play on through high school. My dad's 91, and he's still playing tennis on public tennis courts. And I just, don't give away more public tennis courts, please.
My name is Diane Raj.
Hello, my name is Peter Jacobson. I live in Arroyo Grande, and I play tennis three days a week. I've tried to play at Soto sometimes, and you get over there, and the parking is ridiculous. If you convert some of those courts to pickleball, the traffic is going to be even higher yet, and it's a, it makes it a difficult place to park. I think it's a mistake to do multi-use. We have played over on the courts in Grover Beach, and it was just difficult to get the whole system down. So I think you should keep them as tennis courts, pickleball. Yes, it's an up-and-coming, popular sport, but tennis has been the one sustaining the drive, and it's also, I think, a lot more of a progressive type of sport, especially for kids, if they want to go to a scholarship or become good. That's, they need to do it on public courts to try to do it privately, or somewhere else is prohibitively expensive. But build more pickleball courts in another place. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, and staff, my name is Robert, and I'm a tennis player, but I have nothing against pickleball, per se. In fact, I found a newfound respect from them a couple of weeks ago. I tried to play pickleball for the first time, and I whipped the ball.
If you would, please, please address the council so we can hear you.
Oh, yeah.
I love that you're making friends, though. That's great.
Anyway, I have a newfound respect for pickleball. So it's like I say, I tried to play pickleball a couple of weeks ago and actually whipped the ball about half the time. I've been playing tennis for 50 years, so. Anyway, the reason I came here is, I don't know if anybody has seen this article, New York Times, front page, "New Racquetball Sport Taking Over Florida, the South." My question is, when it gets here, are we going to lose more tennis courts? Anybody want to see this, or?
Hello, Council. My name is Rich Toski. I'm a resident of Arroyo Grande, as well as a volunteer at the pickleball club. And I would like to, without being too redundant, capitalize on what Ronnie mentioned about, you go into a gymnasium, and you've got basketball, volleyball, batmen lines, excuse me. And, you know, it works out for high school sports teams, so I think it can work out on a tennis court as well.
I'm Jennifer Jarvis, and I'm a pickleball player and tennis player, and I play both weekly. The main issue, there's a couple issues that will not be solved by making it multi-use. First of all, I appreciate you trying to make more pickleball courts because there is a need, but it can't be to take away tennis courts. I'm also a captain of three tennis leagues, and none of them would be able to play at the courts anymore. It would completely destroy any match play, the sanctioned play, any of those lines, even though they're multi-use and temporary, would nullify any matches, and that would destroy all of the league play, which is a major problem. It happened in Los Osos, I used to live there many years ago, and it destroyed it. We'd no longer have a surfside team because of the multi-use lines. So whether we can, whether tennis players can actually play on a multi-use or not is beside the point. It would completely shut down our teams. So that alone should not happen. Another issue with the parking, so you mentioned like eight more players. Actually, a pickleball court can be as many as 16 players, and with a couple people waiting, that's 20. That would be 60 people minimum that would be there for the three courts. I don't know how much parking is there, but that would be 60 people plus all the park people, all the two tennis courts that would still be there. It would just, I don't think parking would be feasible. But I am for pickleball courts, just not taking away tennis courts and our sanctioned match play, which would no longer be available. So, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Anita Smith, and I play at Soto every Monday morning, and I'm here to tell you what has happened at the French Park Tennis Court, which was a memorial tennis court. Okay, I was one of the two that headed up, spearheaded a petition so that the court would not be striped, dual striped. We had about 12 pages of signatures, but we lost. And so now the French Tennis Court, which was a memorial tennis court, is now dual striped. Okay, so what has happened now that we have that dual-stripe court? Okay, what was once a popular tennis court for families, young families, for all ages playing there? Tennis players just don't play there anymore. And like what has already been said, tennis players don't want to deal with those dual lines. And like I said, it was a very popular court, but it ain't a popular court no more. Okay, another reason why they don't play there is because when they show up to want to play, you're talking about two tennis players or four tennis players at the most versus four, eight, 12, 16 pickleball players that are on that court. So you just kind of feel intimidated, I guess you could say, so they don't stay and they leave. As far as the tennis, as far as the pickleball nets that are on a tennis court, you're talking about four pickleball nets that are on one tennis court. And those pickleball nets are extremely heavy, and the tennis players don't want to deal with that. What I do, believe it or not, I go every Monday night to that French court, every Monday night, to remind those pickleball players to move those pickleball nets. It doesn't happen unless someone is there telling them or reminding them to do it. There's a big sign on the gate as you leave this area, meaning the court. They just leave. They don't read it or what? I don't know, but the nets are never put away. They're never replaced for the tennis players. It got to be so bad that this is what San Luis Parks and Rec put on the gate one day. It said, "Failure to replace the nets will lead to the nets being unlocked on a permitted play only, with associated fees for city staff and time having to do the job of removing the courts." I can't say that I'm a fan of pickleball after all that I've been through, you know, with the petition and et cetera, et cetera. However, they need their own courts. Noise is a major factor. Pickleball, that ball, is, there's just no doubt about it. It's a noisy ball. And it's not just the ball, it's the voices, it's the shouting, it's all the exuberance that goes with playing that game. One of the things that I did when I was heading all this up was that I went up to Atascadero and Paso Robles and talked to the higher-ups there, and they said, "Do not..."
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Fred Kochi, and I've been here for nine years at AG. I'm just going to pose a lot of questions and just be the devil's advocate and try to be more centered toward data versus emotions and focus on economics of what's going on. If we're going to paint, if we're going to put tape, why not put paint? And what if the pickleball community can get a, you guys may have specs already, you have apparently drawings or whatever, so what if the pickleball committee can get a certified contract to do that work for you and save you some money? There just may be some option to think about and donate the services. At the end of the day, it's a matter of, I think, just economics, supply and demand, single-digit versus triple-digit. At some point, what if, what if the numbers showed that there's only one tennis court is being used on the average all week? Would you keep all four? So then the question would be, what is the breaking point? Is it, what's the demand going to be? The numbers are showing it. And it's not just during club play. When there is no club play during the day, every day of the week, those courts are pretty much full with other players, okay? Which many of them are still club players. But you find a certain demographics that come in the morning that play every morning, Monday through Friday, whether it's club play or not. And then in the evenings, there is four nights that has already been spoken of. One of the gentlemen that is already here, Bob, he organizes a group to come on Friday nights and play there as well. So it's not just limited times, it's being filled all the time. I know you got your problems with parking and all the other issues and money and so on, but taking all the emotions out of it, I think you just got to simply look at the economics of it. What's the demand, supply, and demand? What are you going to, who are you going to serve? And what are you going to serve? Nothing wrong with tennis players. God bless you. I'm sorry what's happening, but the demand is there. By the way, I've become an avid player. I'm 66, and I started playing back in November, okay? And so, and I've only learned how to play pickleball on public courts as well.
Hello, my name is Diane Brand, and I'm an avid pickleball player and ukulele player. Anyway, I, yes, that guy right there, he's a banger. He knows how to play pickleball. So good for him. So I'm looking at the data. I see here the annual membership has grown in the five years, 2019 to 2025. It's been a 36% increase over five years for pickleball. We all agree that the parking lot is a mess. It needs a four-inch overlay, and it's very difficult to park. But I appreciate the city trying to help the pickleball community while I really do feel for the tennis players. But, you know, the queen of our court is 90, you know, so, and I'm 70, so I probably wouldn't be ripping up the tennis court, but boy, I can rip up the pickleball court, and it's a lot of fun. The community, the health of sharing and getting out amongst each other is priceless at our age, you know? We love coming together, and then all sorts of activities spin off of that. You know, they have dinner parties, they play card games. It's just a wonderful community that it's probably not congruent, you know, to really mix pickleball and tennis. But pickleball's not going to go away. It's growing, and I really encourage, I love the idea of taking just one court and maybe making four courts out of one instead of taking two courts. I've played on multi-stripe courts. I can't imagine tennis player would like all those lines, but I play at French, and there is quite a bit of lines, and it can be confusing. So I know the city has all sorts of plans. You have goals, and I was looking here at your, you had a meeting over there at the hotel, and, you know, you've got top priorities for the city over the next two to three years, and there were five of them. So that is a whole nother issue that you all have before you in terms of, it's just a money situation and priorities. Maintenance and repair of streets, all the way down to water resiliency. And further down, this was based on a survey y'all did, under other is pickleball. Now, if you go up, there is recreational activities on line five, and I think that really is building your new building, right? That's important to you all. So that's going to need to be done. I like, goodbye.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Judy Chiketti. So I'm not going to lie, I don't play either one. Sorry. But I think that maybe that should draw some attention to the city, that we need another complex. Maybe we need to start searching for some property, maybe where the women's club is, woman's club, instead of a motel, or maybe some other property so that we could build more. It's nice that the adults play, but there's a lot of kids that go to that complex also. So I'm thinking that we could probably use another one. Also, I think Paul Dean turned their basketball court into pickleball courts, just saying so other people know.
Hi, my name's Michelle Adam. I am an avid member of the tennis community for this entire county. I play a lot through the Central Coast Women's League, through United States Tennis Association, which has given me the opportunity to play all over the state and nationally by playing on the AG courts as well. I think one of the things that I haven't heard spoken here, and I can not quote in greatly about the statistics, but I would encourage you to look at it, is access to tennis has been an economic issue for a long time. It's been a sport that people have to join private clubs. People of lower economic status have not had the access to tennis. And by taking away public courts, you're reducing that opportunity for people to participate and have equal access to tennis. So to me, it doesn't make sense to rob Peter to pay Paul, and I think that's just something that needs to be looked at. I also wanted to add context to something that Jennifer said about nullifying the courts for competition. That is a USTA- That is a USTA thing, United States Tennis Association. When those lines are there, it's no longer a USTA sanctioned court. So that's all I had to say.
My name is Colleen Thompson, and I am the co-captain of the Soto Central Coast Women's Tennis Team. I moved here from Colorado three years ago, and I really searched for tennis community here. It was difficult because I didn't have the financial means to join a country club or a racket club. In Colorado, there was tons of tennis out there. When I got here, it was a struggle. So I found this team at Soto, and we actually play. So they say the pickleball club, well, we don't have a tennis club. We have Central Coast League. Our tennis team, A-League at Soto, has 17 on the roster. We play seven other teams. We play Paso Robles Racket Club. We play Templeton Ranch. We play Slow Country Club. We play Avla Bay. Those are all clubs. We are, you should be proud, AG should be proud, that you have a public court where people that really don't have the financial means to be playing at a country club, play. We're representing AG. They come to these public courts and play, and we need four courts. We have to have four courts. There are four lines of doubles. If we lose that court, we lose the team. And so that's really sad for AG, I think, and the tennis community. And then also, USTA plays matches there too, as they have spoken, we can't play there anymore. So we, AG, has just lost all the tennis community if we lose the four courts. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Trish Wilson, and I play both pickleball and tennis. I feel it's just unfortunate that we've come to a point where one group of athletes is somewhat pitted against another due to a lack of space when our goal is to get out, exercise, stay fit and have fun. I think the argument for turning two existing tennis courts into four pickleball courts is because there's more pickleball players than tennis. And sometimes the tennis courts are empty, it's true, but sometimes the pickleball courts are empty as well. Our area has already lost tennis courts to pickleball at Mentone, Shell Beach and Soto Sports Complex. It seems to me it's time to build new, dedicated pickleball courts. And yes, it's expensive, but so were the tennis courts when they were built. So here are some suggestions. The pickleball courts at Soto are very busy in the mornings, and then I've seen, I play on the women's tennis team, I've seen use taper off in the late mornings and the early afternoon. So perhaps changing the meeting times for some of the groups might help the crowding. The Nazarene Church in San Luis Obispo has three or four pickleball courts on their basketball courts, allowing for pickleball two to three days a week. This also allows for indoor play all year. Perhaps one of the gyms at a local church here in AG can do the same thing. Or perhaps one of the middle schools or high schools could open up their gyms on the weekend. Meadow Park in Slow also provides pickleball. On the asphalt part of the park, is there not an area in AG that could provide a few courts? Lease a parking lot or an unused area that the city owns? If the council does decide to make the tennis courts a mixed use of pickleball and tennis, I recommend tennis players should have the right to take the court if they show up and there are no other tennis courts available. This is what's happening now when pickleball players move onto the tennis courts, and it hasn't been an issue. Pickleball differs from tennis, and that is much louder with noise coming from both the ball on the hard court and the players themselves. It's not uncommon to hear a player yell from four courts away, "Court one is open." Tennis is a much quieter sport, and the etiquette dictates that spectators and players refrain from speaking while play is in progress. The two truly are not compatible within close proximity. We've made it work this far with the one pickleball court out at the back there. A city that cares for the health and well-being of its constituents needs to provide healthy and safe places for all people to recreate. Surely there's a solution that can work for all. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Pollack. I'm a resident of Rojo Grande. And I was the project manager to actually construct the current pickleball courts through with the Five Cities Men's Club. And we did it because there was a demand for pickleball players. The, the issue is that there's, the court density serves people in this community. There's 16 people playing on the pickleball court when there's 16 people playing on another four tennis courts. The question about parking, there are 40 people waiting to play on the weekends for pickleball, and they're already there. They need to have the other courts available. The answer to me is not double-striping courts. The answer is to build other tennis courts in close proximity. There's a cohesiveness in the pickleball community where they all play together and they play with, with each other on the, on the separate courts. So if the other tennis courts that are currently there were pickleball courts, they would rotate through. The tennis courts, even though they could be built in proximity there, in the still-on-the-complex would make much more sense. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Adrian Ashley, and I am a volunteer for the Soto Pickleball Club. And I just, I mean, everybody's made good points. I grew up a tennis player, and now I play pickleball because I can't play tennis anymore. The age range out there is from 15 to 90, so we cover all of that. And I think, having grown up playing tennis, each tennis court is a world unto itself. You have four players. They arrange the time or the place. With the pickleball courts, the way the club has got it set up, anybody in this community can show up with a paddle and sign up, and we accommodate them. And they can go out on the courts, and they can play, and all levels play out there. Whereas tennis, it is, it's a sport where you start as a child and you work up to it. And you can't just walk across the court and go onto a tennis court and say, "I'd like to play with you guys," because the tennis players would say, you know, "Not a chance. No." And so there are all these people that are allowed and included into the pickleball community that can't play in the tennis community. And I understand and completely understand the need for the tennis courts. But I'm not sure that the taxpayers of Rojo Grande should foot the bill for a USTA league that brings no money into us. Whereas the pickleball players, we each play, pay $110 per person, per year, and maintain the courts and include everybody and not just the four people playing on the tennis. But thank you very much.
Anyone else? All right. I'll turn it over to our city clerk and see if there are people online who want to participate.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. And we do have our first speaker as John, or sorry, Josh Endeser. He just popped off. He waited all this time. Okay, so our next, there he is. Hey, one moment. Okay, Josh, you're able to speak.
You guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I got kind of a cold, a little bit stuffy. But thank you for hearing this. I've actually been in the area for a little over 25 years now. And so I was kind of around when that back court was first taken. And there was a lot of people in the tennis community that were very much opposed to that because we kind of knew what would happen. And giving up that one court would eventually lead to giving up more courts. And so there's a lot of us that had opposition to that, and I see that's what's basically coming here. Because once those courts have the dual striping, as many people have talked about, the tennis players just won't use those. The same thing happened on Mentone. I used to play at Mentone a lot as well. In fact, Adam, who already spoke there, Adam and I used to play there all the time. As soon as that dual striping went in, neither one of us wanted to play there anymore. And so we started playing more at the Soto and scheduling there, even though it was more crowded. And what, it's, it's kind of like a self-fulfilling prophecy by doing this dual use. As soon as you put those lines down, the tennis players aren't gonna use it as much, which then means now all of a sudden, pickleball players are using it more and more, which now they're gonna petition to take them over permanently. So I kind of, having seen this already with those back four courts, I'm kind of, I'm more of like feet in the sand. I don't want to give those up because I see what happens. Also, a lot of the good points with the tournaments. I've been in tournaments around in here, and you do need those four, and you can't use a tennis court that has dual striping for a sanctioned play match. And I guess the last part that I kind of want to talk about, oh, I actually have two more things. I don't know how many people know Andre Dome. Andre Dome, I've been playing with and against Andre since the very early 2000s. He's a very, I started playing with him when he was like 12 years old. He grew up on tennis Soto courts, and his dad taught him, didn't have a lot of money. That's how he got to play tennis. His dad was out there coaching him. He eventually went on to be highly ranked in California. He ended up going to play number one singles for Poly, and then he actually went on the pro tour for a while. So taking these tennis courts, courts away, you're, you're robbing people of, of those dreams, of those, those abilities. And I've gone there, even last Thursday, we, a bunch of us showed up on Thursday to play. All four courts of tennis were being taken. And there's lots of other people that were showing up with tennis gear, and they were being turned away. I ended up waiting, and it took us about a half hour before we finally got one. But we can't, I, I understand pickleball's growing. I do. I'm not, I'm not blind. But I don't think it should be allowed to grow at the, at the expense of tennis. In fact, where do you draw that line? Because I would actually make the argument that if, if that's the case, we have all of that garden area. There's only, what, 24 plots of garden? Well, that could easily be turned over.
Our next speaker is Shad Anderson.
Yeah, hello.
There you are. Go ahead.
Yeah, hello, council. You know, we train 80% of the time to play, match play 20% of the time. We bleed out there. We sweat out there. It's a beautiful, blessed sport. My son played and trained many years and used those courts many years, and now he's at Cal Poly. There are no scholarships for pickleball. It's a fantastic hobby and a fantastic game. I'm happy that people, people can play it. I love you, pickleball Bob. But there are no scholarships available for that. We need to have places for the youth to play tennis and to grow the sport of tennis, and anyone is welcome to play with my group. We welcome anyone at any level when you see us out there. We have about 25 people in our group. Those courts are vital to our well-being and our spiritual balance. And I'm very blessed to be able to play out there. So pickleball, by all means. Grow, build more courts. That's what you need. But do not take tennis courts. Boston Steve, Leslie's husband, he says, "We don't put wiffleball or baseball courts on a public golf course just because there's more kids that want to play baseball or wiffleball." So why would you take courts away from a established sport like tennis? Thank you for your time. God bless.
Thank you. If there are any other members of the public on Zoom that would like to speak, please raise your hand. There are no more raised hands.
All right. If you have not yet spoken and you've been inspired to speak now, right before I close public comment, if you've not spoken yet, this is your last shot. Going once? Going twice? All right. So we'll close public comment. At this time, it comes back to the council, and this is for us to deliberate and give direction to staff. So please be patient and orderly. And I must say, before we go anywhere, thank you. You did that really, really well. And I know there's passions out there, and I just want to say y'all should make more friends because you're amazing people, and I'm feeling like kind of a slug sitting over here. So I appreciate that, that you're all fighting for something you, you care deeply about and that is keeping you healthy and here for a really long time and many years more. So with that, we'll turn it back to the council. Is there anyone who would like to go first?
Was there questions?
Okay, yeah, absolutely. Why don't you start? Ladies first.
Well, I figured there was questions. I think there was a few that were asked by...
Oh, the questions of the people. Goodness gracious. I have 13 of them. All right. So before we go to council, let me ask the ones that are here that came from staff. I did combine a couple of them because they did come together. So thank you so much for that. I appreciate that. I told you guys when I got here, I was tired. I'm not on my best game tonight. For number one, the question Sheridan, I think is best for you. When is high demand for tennis and pickleball, and how do we define demand? And how do we make decisions based on those definitions of demand? That's a tough question.
I know, and I would love to answer by saying that the master plan would answer that in full with statistically valid data. So as was mentioned, there have been volunteers who have collected data about the usage of tennis courts and as well as the usage of pickleball courts. I have not been able to verify that data myself to be able to present that to you tonight or with the staff report, but the master plan would allow for that opportunity.
Thank you. And the next question, I think we've kind of, this is the question that's going to come to council. Would multi-use be permanent or temporary?
I, I believe that it would come back to council. It is in your purview, absolutely, to direct staff.
Great. How many courts, I think we kind of through public comment got this answered, but I know you, it's in the staff report, how many courts have been converted in the area?
So courts that have been converted or courts that exist?
It says converted is what the question was.
So seven courts in San Luis Obispo have been converted. I believe that there are several courts in Napa that have been converted as well. And then the tennis courts in Grover Beach, there's one tennis court that was converted to four pickleball courts.
Okay. And what...
In addition to Pismo, I'm sorry. The same occurred in Pismo Beach. That one tennis court was converted into four pickleball courts.
Thank you. What's the cost of temporary installation, or could you eyeball that or spitball? I don't know what the right word is.
Two tennis courts to be converted to four multi-use courts would be approximately $12,000.
For temporary?
Correct.
Okay, got it. The question was how many courts are in the planning stages? But I think that really is asking how many courts would we be looking at adding potentially as part of the master plan, or is that the question?
That would be a question as well.
Okay, great. There was a question about how to handle, if there's a conversion, how do you handle who has priority? There's kind of a combination of questions here. How will temporary play be managed? How will the temporary nets be handled? By whom would they be handled? Can you kind of speak to that a little bit and your vision of how multi-use might...
Volunteers who are very dedicated, they spend a lot of time accommodating other people to be able to play the sport, teach the sport, so that could be one of those responsibilities of the volunteers. Sorry, I lost my train of thought for a second. So in addition to that, figuring out a schedule that would work for both groups, I think that would be the challenging point. So I've been in communication with the City of San Luis Obispo and their Parks and Recreation Department, and they have days that are allocated so that we, that they don't have user groups that are arriving and determining whether somebody is there or not there, whether they can use the court or whether they can't use the court. It's specific days that are allocated to either group. The problem with some of that for some of our users is that there might be league play for a particular group on one day versus not having league play on another day. So for example, if tennis players have a league that occurs on Monday, but that were dedicated to pickleball, then they wouldn't be able to schedule their league play on that day. Or vice versa, for pickleball players who regularly attend on a particular day. It could be done. Certainly, we could make the schedule and we can identify the times for either group. It just would require compromise from each group.
Okay. Why couldn't we convert another type of court and not a tennis court? Have we looked at that?
So we have two basketball courts within the city, and that would be at Rancho Grande Park as well as Struther Park. Those could be potentials. However, they do have public art on both of those courts, so that would not be an option at this point unless we remove the public art and went forward with the multi-use courts. The other challenge with both of those locations are noise factors that we would need to take in consideration for the neighbors, and that would require a bit of a study to figure out the... that we would need to take in consideration for the neighbors and that would require a bit of a study to figure out the proximity to neighbors and sound barriers and that sort of thing.
Thank you. Can, I guess, I guess we already know the answer to that. What are the safety considerations for both sports with multiple lines? That came up from both groups.
So, I haven't heard of the slip factor for the multiple lines, but I do know that there could be a potential of rolled ankles if there were a moment of hesitation or uncertainty. So considering safety in that regard, that's what comes to mind for safety. I would need to invest further, investigate further.
Okay. And somebody asked why tape versus paint, but I think the answer to that is one's temporary and one's not. Is, is there a scenario where paint can be temporary? I mean, I know that sounds ridiculous, but paint ends up being thick. So, I understand the nature of that question.
I'm sure, I'm sure there's a product out there. We would just need to do a little bit more research and then figure out how, what the longevity of that project is and how soon we would have to go back and repaint if that were the case.
Okay. Has, have you or any staff looked at whether or not pickleball clubs could do the work or services of adding? I'm not sure what. The question maybe was more paint or more courts or I don't know what. Have we looked at that?
We have a very passionate pickleball community that are willing and have already demonstrated their willingness to volunteer and assist with projects as well as any service that might be needed. However, it would depend on what the project is and how the council is wanting to move forward. Whether the work that volunteers could provide would be up to standard for what the work expectation is. For example, laying concrete or installing fencing or whatever that might look like.
Do we fall into prevailing wage when we start looking at that? And I see Bill nodding about this. Okay, thank you. That was my question, not yours. And then, could we look elsewhere in the city? Perhaps there was some creative questions about looking at unutilized property like the women's, next to the women's center or those sorts of things. Is that a possibility?
So, next to the women's center, obviously, the council has identified a potential project in that location that was mentioned. However, there, I know there are, and this is counter to what some of the speakers were talking about, about pickleball being a communal sport and you, you get to see people and, and part of it is the waiting for the next match to start. But there are other communities throughout the US who actually are converting large sections of parking lots into pickleball courts when they're unused because for decades we've overparked all of our shopping centers. Do I know that that's a, a good idea here? No, we don't because we haven't looked at that. Anywhere else, really, we haven't, we haven't got past the request coming back to council.
Okay, thank you. That's it for the questions that I collected or, or gathered together from the public. So, did you have questions as well or did that answer some of your questions?
It answered some of my questions. This, the parking lot question just sparked something in my mind going, would that be part of this master plan though? This would be in addition to that if we were looking for anything like that.
Yeah, that would have to be a whole separate effort from the master plan. But, could the master plan identify additional areas where new courts could be built? Absolutely it could. As part of the Greater Soto Sports Complex, Elm Street Park area.
Councilmember Guthrie?
So, do we have an idea of the approximate cost of building a, what I guess would be a pair of tennis courts? I think generally the way they're done or, or a single court? Do we have an idea what that would cost from scratch?
Approximately $100,000 to $300,000 for a new court.
Okay. And that's, is that a single tennis court or is that a double tennis court?
I believe it would be a single tennis court which would fit for pickleball courts. So approximately that.
Okay. I just, I usually see them done in pairs.
I know. And there, there is a range depending on the surfacing, depending on the fencing, depending on the lighting. So, there's...
Well, based on the input, it'd probably be at the high end. And so, we heard about one tennis team that plays out of AG and I'm guessing there's some sort of league so they play home games, you know, two or three times a year? Do we, do we have other tennis teams that we know of? We have someone from San Luis Obispo that wants to come down and play here and use our courts? Do we have, do you know of other tennis teams? Because I assume they have to actually reserve the courts.
We do. We have several leagues that come and play from Avala, San Luis Obispo, as well as Shell Beach.
Okay. So, and are they playing our, our, the, the AG team and coming here and playing? Or are they playing their own home games here, for lack of another term?
I don't track that currently, but I certainly could look into that and, and bring that data back to you. I don't ask who they're playing when they reserve the courts.
Okay, okay. So, this will answer my question. How many times a year are all four courts reserved for that kind of, for, for any activity?
So, on average, we have, the tennis courts are reserved approximately two to 20 hours per week. So, ranging on when the games are and as well as seasonally. That's our, that's the data that we have for the use and reservations of tennis courts.
Two to 20 is a pretty broad range. Do you have a sense though, are there, are all four of them rented six times a month? They're 10 times a month or, or two times a month?
I have it broken out hourly. So, my apologies. I can bring that data back to you.
Is, is there, is there, there used to be a Roy Grandy Tennis Club. Is there an Roy Grandy Tennis Club now?
Not active. There used to be a Five Cities Tennis Association that was very active at Soto Sports Complex.
And, and are they active now?
They are not currently active.
And then, so mentioning the noise issues at other parks in town, do we get complaints about them? There, there are plenty of people that live around Elm Street Park. Do we get complaints there about the noise?
Since I have been in this position, I've received two phone calls about noise complaints regarding pickleball.
Okay.
So that's 10 years, two phone calls, which I consider myself very lucky.
Right. So, noise is probably not an issue at another park?
No.
Okay.
Oh, noise would be an issue at another park for pickleball. I'm sorry, the takeaway from that.
Why is it that at Elm Street Park it's not and at another location it would be?
Because where the courts are situated right now, there's a softball field that's directly behind where the courts are located. So you don't have neighbors that are on the other side of the city boundary, city property.
Rancho Grande Park is, there's plenty of locations that would be far away and even Struther Park has a parking lot between, between the park. There, there would certainly be the possibility there.
So, I think the, the concern there is, could it, could it be possible that we don't have any noise complaints out of the parks? Yes. But is that something we would want to study before just throwing new pickleball courts out of a different park? Yes, we would want to look at that.
Okay. I'll save the rest of that for a comment. Yeah, those are my questions. Thanks.
Councilmember Lo, any questions?
I was just going to ask a question related to what Councilmember Guthrie was bringing up about league play. And maybe, maybe you don't have this information, but it was interesting to hear about the requirements for league play. So, do you know then if temporary, if they, if the temporary striping was used, that we would essentially be banning league play?
That it would not be conducive, it would not be condoned by USTA?
Or, is all of the league play sanctioned by the USTA?
I don't know that all of the league play is sanctioned. So there may be practices that are not sanctioned, but certainly the games and the tournaments.
Thank you.
No more questions? Councilmember Guthrie, you were on a roll. You want to start us off?
I said ladies first and then I took it back.
Boy, I have so many thoughts now. So, first off, this reminds me, we have a couple of planning commissioners here, former planning commissioners of a view shed issue. You know, when you've got, one person has a view and they don't want somebody to take their view away. We have the tennis players who have the courts and they don't want someone to take that away and how difficult those decisions are. And particularly PTSD from some of those. I guess I'll, I'll say first that things change. I mean, back before McEnroe and Connors made tennis an everyman's sport. We, we didn't need public courts because nobody, nobody played. Back then, it was all about basketball. It was all pickup basketball. And then tennis came in and now there's hardly any basketball courts. And certainly not basketball courts where there's enough courts to where you can have what I'll call a mass pickup game like we have with pickleball. In fact, I think that's really what drives pickleball as a more popular sport, is the fact that you can just show up and play. You don't have to arrange for somebody in your, in your ability range to be there when you play tennis. Tennis is a much longer sport. Couple of hours versus 20 minutes. You can move a lot more people through, even if it was just one pickleball court in comparison. So I think that's rather, the reason pickleball courts are getting converted, because there's more and more pickleball players all the time. It's not, and, and I, I know we don't have very specific data, but I would tell you, I walk through this park all the time and I, I've only seen all four courts used once and that was in the morning when we had that heat. Everybody showed up before it got hot. So, my first thought here was that having the court that can switch back and forth, to me, would be clearly manageable. Now, I'm hearing it's not. That basically it's just DOA for the tennis players if, if we have a court that switches back and forth. That, that you just can't play on that. I do agree that we do it with volleyball and basketball all the time and, and, but it is... I don't play tennis. I don't play pickleball either, by the way. But, I, I have done, I did go down and do quite a bit of observing and I will say, this is much more popular sport than tennis is for a whole bunch of reasons. And will continue to be a more popular sport. By the time we do, by the time we add more courts though, may very well be pickleball's out and something else is in. Because like I say, 10, it could be, we're talking about a master plan, but it could very well be 10, 10 years before we're actually able to fund whatever comes out in that master plan. So, I'm still inclined, even though it's $12,000, to go ahead and do the conversion and see how it works. If worse came to worse and we had to switch it back, that in fact, we, we hurt more players than we helped, I, I, I would, I would be inclined to go in that, in that direction. I did not think we had to convert two courts in order to, to do that. I, I can't see doing a permanent conversion of one court when we then eliminate this whole, this, this whole offering that we have right now. I'm not ready to do that. This would be a lot easier decision if we had a sixth court so, so that we didn't reduce this beyond, below this four. I will point out one thing that I learned in talking to the pickleball people is they can't do a tournament because they need eight courts. So, you guys have your tournament, they can't have theirs. There's perhaps an argument, the reason I was asking about what it costs to build one of these and the difficulty of maybe moving them to a different park is, it would actually be best to move, to build two new courts totally somewhere else. So that there's no conflict at all. There's enough, there's, there's enough synergy. I, I think what it is, is having somewhere, and I think we have this synergy because I think we were the first pickleball court in the area. I may be wrong, but I, I remember when, when this happened the first time, that, that there was a lot of demand for it. And, and, and so we were the ones that ended up stepping up and doing that. So, I, I can certainly see this both ways. It is difficult to say we're going to eliminate these leagues. And, and it's unfortunate that that's the way this come down. But, I, I would still be in favor of giving it a shot. It's, it, it is, it is that many people. On the parking issue, I'll just say we'll never, never have enough parking. And I'll kind of transfer into, I'll transfer into talking about the, the master plan here. So, one of my primary concerns about all of this is that Elm Street Park is the park for half of our population. We have one small park, three, three, only three acres that serves where we have all of the high density. We have all of the apartments, or not all of them, but most of the apartments there, most of the multifamily, whole bunch of PUDs that we approved. We'll probably be approving a bunch more stuff over there. And that is the, the one place that those people who have limited, they're not, they don't have an acre like you do in Rancho Grande. They have relatively small areas. And we have, I think, done a great job of taking a very small place and accommodating that. And I'm particularly concerned that when we do a master plan, that we take away, take space away to make more parking for people who, who don't live in that area. And I'm particularly concerned that something like a master plan ends up eliminating a lot of other ideas. So, we have the only dog park in the Five Cities area. If we had a master plan, nobody would have master planned for a dog park as small as we have. It works great. But if we had a master plan, it would have to be much bigger and would frankly just be eliminated. And when they came forward and asked to do a, a dog park, it's very likely we said, "Well, we have this master plan, you're out." I'd say even a similar deal with pickleball. Pickleball, if we had a master plan that said, "We have this tennis facility" and then pickleball came in and said, "Well, we've got a bunch of people who want to play pickleball", we'd say, "Oh, you know, we have a master plan and there's not room for pickleball here." So, almost not having a plan was a good thing. In fact, I think you could even argue that the, the way the, the, the new playground came forward was, was pretty organic as well. That, that a master plan might have, might, might have made that more difficult. I, I think we can look at, without doing a master plan, we can look at what we need right now. We need bathrooms at Elm Street Park and that's, and, and at this area. And if we do this master plan, it's at least two years out. I would much, I would much rather see us just pick a location for the, for the bathrooms and do the bathrooms right now and move the master plan down two or three years. We also need at least a facility to house our, to house our recreation staff there or, or maybe somewhere else. But we, we definitely need a, a location to do that. And that's one of the things that's on our list to give input tonight. Again, that's going to get pushed down, that's going to push down at least to, I think it's 28, 29 based on the, the funding cycle. And that's too long. So, I, I'm inclined to take the two or three things that we know we need to do. One is the, the bathrooms and the two is the location for our recreation staff. Put those together and prioritize that without the master plan. And just, we're going to do these two things. This is one thing that, that I've noticed over, over time having did it, that we put together these plans and they end up tying our hands. When we actually have opportunities to do things, we're much better off just to take the opportunities that we have. And then, well, yeah, there is just $275,000. It's just, feels like a lot of money for something that I think we could, we could do ourselves. We did an excellent job of putting together the street plan. We didn't hire a, so we, we have a consultant who helps us with that, but we didn't hire a consultant for a whole bunch of money to come in and do it. We did that in-house. We looked at what we had and what we needed to do and we put together a plan. I think we could put together that plan in three months in-house and then spend our money executing that plan rather than planning that plan. So, I would, I would, what, what I would like to see us do is put together what I'll call a priority plan in-house for the five or six things that we know need to happen up there. I wouldn't include, I would include fixing that parking lot, but I don't know that I would include parking. Again, I am very concerned that we, that we end up reducing further the size of Elm Street Park while we are accommodating Soto Sports Complex. There's, there's just no, no other park space, significant park space available on the, on the whole west side. So, that, that's what I'd like to see. Not do the master plan, take the $275,000 and apply it toward installing bathrooms and possibly combining that with the $600,000 for planning next year to do bathrooms and I'm going to say a thousand square foot office facility for the, for, for the recreation staff. And maybe combine those into a single, into a single unit. So that's my thoughts. So that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Councilmember Lowe, would you like to go next? You reached.
Well, I'll try. First of all, thank you, everyone, for coming and for all your incredible, passionate comments. And Jim for kicking that off, too. This is not as easy as I thought it was going to be. But I will say, I will start off by saying, we're a small town with people who like to get outside and do things. And we don't have a ton of resources. And so we're trying to make good out of the little that we have. And I think a lot of good points were made. I've learned a lot. Obviously, the heaviest amount of comment came from the tennis community, and I learned a lot. Full disclosure, I do play pickleball. For all the reasons that Councilmember Guthrie mentioned, it is very welcoming. That whole pickup thing is very attractive to me. I'm a planner, but I'm terrible at planning my day. All right? But if I have, you know, an hour to go play some pickleball, I can run down there and do that. So there are many reasons why, yeah, things change. Researchers are limited. And another quote was, when they came forward, as Councilmember Guthrie said, when the dog park folks came forward and said, "We'd like to do X." We have a pickleball club that is very active and very interested in seeing how we can meet the demand out there. And clearly, in this city, we need more of everything. We need more parks, we need more fields, we need more trails, we need more courts for, you know, every kind of sport. There's a long list, there really is. And I'm also grateful to Councilmember Guthrie for asking that this be put on the agenda and for whomever wrote that letter initially. I think it's important, this is an important, I mean, here we're spending a good amount of time discussing this, but I think this is a really important topic for us. But I will say, for me, it feels like this is all very imperfect. I feel like pickleball is a very popular sport up and coming, that we've got more. The numbers are growing faster in pickleball. I feel that the asset here, this is a public asset. The acreage, let's say, the area that is taken up by the courts, that's a public asset. And these are hard decisions, but I think to a certain degree, it's important for us to, we have to make these hard decisions to see how we can provide the greatest benefit to the community. I think that the object here of trying to share the courts is very imperfect. And I learned more tonight about how imperfect that is. I wasn't aware of that. But still, I'm compelled to agree with the idea of trying this out, trying out a temporary striping. We have an active group willing to put it in, and I think it could be implemented on a temporary basis and be part of the, this effort could inform a master plan. And as Councilmember Guthrie mentioned, a master plan takes time. If it's not done by June, or if it's delayed, if other things are prioritized, it's hard to say how long it takes to get to better answers, better solutions, more courts. Putting more and new courts somewhere else is going to be expensive. And the noise issue is not a small one. I think, you know, many of us have probably heard stories about other communities where they've tried to find new places for pickleball, and it is difficult. The other parks that were mentioned today, I can imagine noise being an issue introducing pickleball to new parks in the area. At Elm Street, it's an existing use. You know, two complaints in 10 years is a pretty good record. So like I said, I think this is a really difficult decision to make. These are hard choices. But I think I would favor providing the benefit to the larger number in the interim period of time to be reevaluated at a later date when we have more information, we have better ideas about how long or where we would put more permanent courts and use that information to grow forward. And I would like it to be something that the whole community could come together and be supportive of everybody being, you know, getting out, having fun. That would be my priority, is more fun for more people. Thank you.
Councilmember Maravilla?
Thank you. Again, I appreciate you all being here. I haven't been on council very long, and I think this is the most amount of people we've had in the room since I've been on council. So I think that says a lot, actually. It says what's important to people in our community, and this is a very important thing to people in our community. I think, I personally believe parks and facilities are very important to our community in general. And I think that we owe it to our community to have more data before making this decision. I think we're talking about a small aspect of this, it's not a giant complex, but of a complex. And that was why that part of the master plan was really important to me and was the community data gathering and not just from the tennis and pickleball players. I think we need to be looking at data from everyone else that is using that facility and seeing what is truly best for our community. I live two blocks from the park, just putting it up there, so I'm there every day as well. I think I've ran into Councilmember Guthrie several times walking through it. But it is a very, very well-utilized facility. You go there on the weekend, and it's insanity, especially right now with soccer, but same within the spring with baseball and softball. And I think we owe it to all those people as well to kind of talk to them and figure out what is the best use of this limited space that we have in such a busy part of our community. I would not be in favor of moving forward with a temporary thing at this point. I don't think we have enough data in order to make that decision. And I have no ball in this court, for lack of a pun right now. I don't play any sports that involve balls whatsoever. I am a runner. And I don't utilize those facilities. But I just think we need more information before doing this. It's not something I'm comfortable moving forward with without that kind of information. So, yeah, we'll leave that with that particular part. But with the rest of it, I would encourage a master plan of some sort. I know that's part of the discussion that we're supposed to be having right now. And I think the infrastructure there is important, but I would like to see what the community wants.
All right. One thing I don't like seeing is one group pitted against another, and I've learned a lot tonight. And as you all, lots of you here know me, and you've been watching me a long time, and you know I don't prepare anything ahead of time. And I sit here and I write oodles of notes, and then I try and figure it all out at the end. So I have a lot of comments here that are all over the place because I was truly listening to everybody, and I learned a lot of things tonight. The first thing I picked up, or not first thing, but in this order, I appreciated what Councilmember Lowe said about all of this being imperfect right now. And that's, I'm uncomfortable with imperfection. I'm a perfectionist by nature. I want to make it all pretty and nice with a bow on it, and there may not be a way to do that. And that makes me very uncomfortable. I appreciate what Councilmember Maravilla said about we owe it to everybody to get more data. That really resonated with me. And I really appreciate Councilmember Guthrie for so many reasons. But his experience and his ability to kind of come at it from a different direction really helps. And the fact that we now have districts and people who are kind of more focused on that as part of their service really came to bear in this conversation, that districts three and four are all being served by one park. And I had not thought of that. Not that I have not walked every single house in this city over and over and over again, but that resonated with me as well. And I didn't think about the fact that adding parking would potentially impact the neighborhood aspect of Soto Field and make it more Soto complex and make it more regional. And I'm not sure that's the goal we're going for as a council. So we hadn't really discussed that. So all three of you have added to my decision-making tonight. Lots of the other things that I wrote down, I came in thinking, gosh, doesn't it make sense to just try it out temporarily? And what I learned tonight was, nope, that doesn't make sense. It makes sense to one group, but not the other. And I'm not willing right now to favor one group over the other. I'm listening to public comment, and I'm trying to learn how we can solve this problem, and I really haven't learned that yet. And that speaks to what we're trying to talk about tonight, which is trying to learn the answer to that, and that's the master plan. I'm going to go through the things that staff asked us to go through, because I didn't hear the rest of the council do this. So I kind of want to lead that piece of the conversation. Again, forgive me, I am now in my 13th hour of working today, so my brain isn't firing real well. So if I'm stumbling more than often, or more than I usually do, it's because I'm really tired. Community engagement is number one. The question is, how do we provide direction on surveying community needs, facility locations, infrastructures, and priorities through flash vote and workshops included in the RFP processes or alternative statistically valid outreach and workshops included in the RFP process? I love this idea. I love the flash vote. I hope you all got that QR code. I didn't see anybody whip out their phone, so hopefully you've all already been to the RoyalGrande.org website and you're already on flash vote. So please do. But I think it's important that it's statistically valid. And tonight, I heard a lot of anecdotal information. I am not saying that, probably everybody who came to the podium tonight said something truthful. I'm not questioning anyone, but it's still anecdotal, and it's not data, and I'd like to see data. For number, so I'm in favor of number one for community engagement. The recommendation that staff made. For recreation facilities, decide whether the master plan should do these things. Include a recreation service office alone, or include a community center with multi-generational programming, funding, and partnership opportunities, or defer its decision until community feedback is obtained through community engagement. I am in favor of option C. I think we need to gather more data, have it be statistically valid, and get community feedback over what kind of building we want to put there. For infrastructure, confirm inclusion of permanent infrastructure at Elm Street Park, including restrooms, parking and access improvements, phased lighting upgrades, safe spectator spaces, and coordination of retention basin projects for efficiencies. I came in saying, gosh, all those are great. But I'm, having considered what Councilmember Guthrie said as the District Four representative and the importance of keeping this... Royal Grandi citizens are footing this bill, so Royal Grandi citizens have to come first. I'm not sure that expanding parking is what I'd want to do at the expense of grass or courts. So I think at this point, it goes without saying that we need to maintain the pavement that's there. So I don't think that's what we're talking about here. I would not be for expansion of that based on this conversation, but it certainly can be something that, I don't want to put an emphasis on that. So I would say A, C, D, and E. I know that safe spectator spaces, just, you know, we have family members who play in the retention basins, that's a thing. And people walking on slanted ground and those sorts of things, I know that this is an issue. So I definitely want that. And coordination of retention basin projects for efficiencies makes all the sense in the world. That's the fiscally responsible thing to do. These do have infrastructure functions in addition to recreation functions. So again, on number three, I would go with A, C, D, and E. For connectivity, confirming inclusion of safe pedestrian pathways and connectivity throughout the complex and park, yes, I'm in favor of that. And on five, I had initially, like I said, I came in here thinking, let's, not biblically, but split the baby without killing both, but have multi-use and see how it goes. But in hearing that the tennis community seems to be pretty united, that that's going to favor one group over another, I'm not ready to do that right now. I'm also not ready to say we don't need more pickleball courts. It's clear that we do. The concern that I have is, as Councilmember Maravilla said, okay, let's say that we choose not to convert tennis courts, and we choose to potentially either, well, either not convert tennis courts and add a pickleball court, which would be four, I guess, when you add one, that we do that, or we convert the tennis courts and put tennis courts somewhere else. Either way, now we got to talk to baseball and softball and soccer and football. So this isn't a pickleball versus tennis argument. And by reduce, not reducing, by focusing on that tonight, I think we miss the larger issue. So I'm not ready right now yet. I want you to know, especially to the pickleball players, I'm hearing you. I hear you, you want more space. But I also hear the tennis people, too. And I don't want to make a short-term decision right now without having as much information as I'd like to have. I just don't think we have anything but anecdotal information right now. It's pretty clear to me that we need more hard surface there. I just don't know where it goes, and I don't know who we take it from yet. All that being said, Councilmember Guthrie, you almost swayed me. I'm not sure I'm completely swayed, and I want to hear from the other two who didn't comment on the rest of the plan. You guys focused more on the pickleball versus tennis part. Councilmember Guthrie, I'm having trouble saying we're going to spend $1 million and end up with bathrooms. I think that's what you were saying. It's $275,000 for a master plan, and hold on a second, and then $600,000, and then what we have to show for it after two years is bathrooms. And where are we going to go from there? I hear that. And I also hear you talking about a prioritization of what is here. And that resonated with me as well. So I could go either way on that.
Let me just clarify. If we're going to spend the $600,000, I would expect to get what I'm calling a minimum facility, thousand-square-foot modular, if that's what it takes, that would, that could either house both, basically be what we had as the administrative building, a third of that, or a quarter of it, I guess it actually was, that would house our recreation department and provide the bathrooms. And if not, just the bathrooms. But I, for 200, I will point out that the bathrooms, the permanent bathrooms that we put in at Heritage Park were $750,000. 10 years ago, 15 years ago. So bathrooms are number one to me. So I think if we did a modular, we could actually get a modular that would house staff. If we couldn't, then we'd come back and go to the master plan. But I think for $875,000, we could get the bathrooms and a minimum facility for staff. That's what I'm going to look at.
Okay. And Councilmember Lowe, you look like you're ready to weigh in?
Thank you, Mayor. Like I said, this is complicated. So now, it feels like we're rethinking the planning effort versus implementation. So we're talking about $275,000 for planning and $600,000 is what's been talked about for a building. And so now we're talking about potentially combining those dollars. I'm not sure if that's been presented to us as being on the table as an option. At least it wasn't, the staff hasn't put it together that way. So I'm concerned a little bit about, let's talk about like mixing these phases, like combining our planning and construction into one thing, and then just deciding from the day as what's most important to build first. So I sort of feel like we need to commit to either doing a master plan, yes or no. And and I don't know if there's a master plan light. I mean, $275,000 for plan isn't a huge amount in in planning dollars. And what I'm seeing at this as the scope of this isn't very complex. It's it's a somewhat basic scope for the bathrooms, parking, parking which exists. I mean, we still have to evaluate existing parking even if it's not expanding. You know, so so I'm seeing I'm seeing a scope for a master plan here that seems fairly tight. And it's not saying a field of dreams or or new this or new that, because the the site itself is constrained and there's existing uses. And so I think there is value in making sure we have what we want, where we want it. The the question about recreation services office, the question that comes to my mind, and I'm not, I haven't been on the council as long or or and I wasn't on the Planning Commission, but my first question is, well, where's the new City Hall gonna be? You know, and I know that that's also not a near-term thing, that's a future thing. But are we setting ourselves up to have a recreation services, an office at the park? Or are we talking about somehow consolidating administrative services somewhere else? So I so I don't know where that leaves us with the community center and combining these things. So so for me, we start talking about one thing that leads to these this this other discussion. So I'm I'm in favor of continuing with the master plan at a at a limited scope. And I think that that it is important to prioritize the implementation. And so I wouldn't disagree with Councilmember Guthrie about saying, you know, this is really a critical need is having the bathrooms. But then we'd say, here's our implementation strategy, one, two, three. Maybe that could be part of the master plan. If the master plan would prioritize those those implementation steps. And then and and so on the other points, I will say, for community engagement, I would I would like to stick with the recommended Part A flash vote. I I'm not a fan of statistically valid outreach, because I think you're gonna pay a lot of money for that. And I'm not sure it's worth it. I think it's hard to get statistically valid research, but I I like the idea of the flash vote and and the workshops. So I hope I've addressed, like, the recreation facilities, I guess is an open-ended question. But it's it's gonna have to somehow include both options in it at a at a high level. Yes, yes, thank you. Infrastructure, I would say yes to all. Four, I say yes. And pickleball, I know I'm gonna lose some friends over this, but I still would. I'm still in favor of doing the temporary conversion and trying it out. And and we're not losing anything, but I think it's an opportunity to share space and and try harder to support each other. And and I don't have a good quote to end on, but I'll just I'll just leave it there. So so for pickleball, I'm kind of I'm in the camp of basically. I'm gonna say basically C and D, I'm not gonna pick one. Whether one court could be, you know, whether we could back to just converting one court and trying it, if it makes sense. And really allowing this group that came forward. I mean, we're here because the pickleball group came forward and asked the question. And I almost feel that we should honor that part of our community who wants to help make things better and different. And like I said, it's imperfect, there's compromise. And then D, we absolutely need to find places for more courts. And that's a bigger question. As Matt, as the Mr. Downing mentioned, it's probably beyond the scope of this master plan to find, if he did say this, around the city, because it involves doing evaluation of other geographic locations. So yes, we need new pickleball courts. So so yes to D in terms of constructing dedicated. So C and D, sorry, I'll quit talking.
Councilmember Marvali, I'm sorry, it's all me. Can you just kinda run down that list for me real quick? Because I'm actually tallying this up.
That's all good. I I am in favor of moving forward with the master plan. A master plan light could be on the table, but yes. Because I do agree that it's kind of limited in scope. In terms of community engagement, I guess I'm I'm definitely A, in favor of A. With the addition of, I would love to do some qualitative research in there of talking to the people that actually use the facility quite regularly. I think that should be part of what engagement that we're doing is talking to all the sports leagues, talking to the, you know, the tennis club, the pickleball club, all those type of things to get kind of that kind of feedback from people that are there all the time. The recreation facilities, I would be C on that one. Infrastructure, I think similar to to the mayor, I would A, C, D, E. But I would not love to add parking, but I do wonder if there's ways to look at it to reconfigure things. And so I do want improvements, but I don't necessarily want more parking, if that makes sense. Connectivity, I think, is absolutely. There is no great way to get from like Elm Street Park to the fields. And then you're like, when you have little kids, you're like, don't run in the street. It's horrible. So I would definitely be in favor of of safe pedestrian pathways and connectivity within the park. On pickleball courts, I'm I would like to differ.
And Councilmember Guthrie, you wanna run through that list for me real quick?
Let me just do do one thing first. So on on the, well, I'm gonna lose this anyway, but I I just. My proposal would have been that we ask staff to take a look at spending the the first two sums of money specifically on bathrooms and 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 staff location, and see if we could get that done for that. And come back, and if it can't be done, then then we would go to the master plan. But it does sound like I'm not gonna win on that. I think my my concern on community engagement here is that we're gonna go out and talk to all the special interests, pickleball, tennis, all of the sports, but the immediate neighborhood gets left out. And I'll tell you, if you ask the immediate neighborhood whether they like having the lights on and softball and kids yelling and screaming all day on Saturday, they're gonna say no. But we we do need to make as treat them as, at least as far as Elm Street Park goes, treat them as as more than equals, frankly, because it is it is their park. And at this point, it's it's outside of the outside of the dog park, there's there's nothing there for 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 anybody else. So on community engagement, specifically reaching out to to the immediate neighbors, to the anybody within a 15-minute walk. What is that, a mile, whatever that is? Recreation facilities, my position would still be that we do this as a phased approach. We do, we we do, not really even a phased report, that we're going to iterate here. We're gonna do the minimum that we need to do and then and then see what the demands are. Rather than reach out to a whole bunch of people, what all would you like us to do? When we can really not afford to do, we we can't put in 15 classrooms here. We, you know, we we can't meet everybody's needs. We we don't have room for that many courts or that many things. We we need to look at what I would call sort of a minimum viable product that 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 we can get done with the with the available funds we have.
So you're A?
Oh, sorry, I lost. Yes, yeah, sorry. Infrastructure, restrooms.
Do you wanna put all of your votes on A?
Yes, put all of my votes on A. If, yeah, if we're gonna do it, though, you guys may remember, I tried to get the, when they were doing the active transportation plan, to get them to put back in that trail through there. We chose not to. But that that trail that would connect, I guess, back along the the retention basin there. Phase light, so certainly not E and, well, yeah, put all of my all of mine on on A if if we're in fact doing A and and two as well.
But not E?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, skipped lines there. All right, restrooms, no, no parking improvements, phase lighting upgrades. I'll go with safe spectator space, I'm not sure what that is. And certainly coordination of the retention basins, because that's certainly the one place where you might have potential to to get some more some more field and court space. I think we should take the pickleball courts as a separate vote here. Sounds like we're from from the master plan, so I'd recommend that we vote on that separately. And then I I think you can probably put together a master plan. Somebody can put together a position on the master plan.
I didn't understand what you mean, somebody could put that, did you mean staff? Did you mean us?
Yeah, I think somebody, somebody up here, probably not me, can can put together a motion.
I'll try. Okay, are you ready?
Well, should we do pickleball first? That's a simpler one.
I'd rather do the master plan first. Okay, motion for on the on the elements for the master plan and but you'll have to. I need to confirm that I got this right. My, okay, here's my motion, you can tell me. On community, I move to provide some direction for the master plan on community engagement, that it's Part A. On recreation facilities, that it's C? Do I do I need to read them?
It's your motion. Yeah, no, you can keep going.
That on infrastructure, it's all A through E with a with a asterisk on parking, that it's for like not expansion of parking. But we talked about the surface needing improvement. On four, includes connectivity under number four.
I'll second that.
All right, can we, Isaac, you're leaning in?
Just to ask, I think taking both separately makes sense, but just for the motion maker and the second, a verbal confirmation that would also include staff's recommendation on the CEQA exemption findings.
Yes. I should have known it was CEQA.
I knew it was CEQA. My second, yes.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, comment?
Yeah, so I'm not gonna be able to support this. One, I I do think that the master plan is is really, it ends up being a distraction from what we need to accomplish. And of course, I I I do think we should, as I noted, should just be doing the recreation facilities building. I I think we're just begging for trouble to go out to the public and say, how many, wouldn't you like to have all these wonderful things? And then we can't deliver it. And so for that reason, I won't be supporting this.
Under discussion. Let me make sure I'm understanding. When we say recreation facilities and community feedback, I didn't I didn't interpret that to mean ask everybody what their wish list is. But maybe I need clarification of what staff envisions that outreach is before I say yes or no.
As the motion maker, may I make, may I clarify? As the motion maker for under recreation facilities, I was only referring to the recreation service office being by itself or a combination of community center.
You said C, so did you mean A?
Okay, I meant, okay, I said C because I think we need input to determine that. But but for recreation facilities, the it was not my understanding that we'd be talking about all kinds of that we'd be opening it up, the discussion of all kinds of, it was just about the building structure, whether it's an office or it's a community center.
And second, same with you, you agree?
Yeah, to defer the decision on what to do with the building structure.
Just the building, not the rest.
Not not all kinds of, not opening it up to new.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I clarify something?
Please do.
So our intent with that is really asking not to say, okay, it's a completely blank canvas, community, tell us everything that you wanna throw into this master plan. We know we need space for our recreation services department to to do their work. The question that has come in front of the council previously is the idea of a community center. We had one-ish previously. And the direction at that time was, we'll go find a partner to design and develop and construct this thing and then come back to us. What we found is that the partners wanna see what what's out there. So getting the community feedback is really, it's a, we know we need office space. What other things does the community want or need? But not in this, like, give us every single wish list item and and you can have it, because we we have to have, we have to be realistic. So it really is, we know we need storage space for all of the events, all the equipment that goes along with our recreation events that we do, instead of renting storage units and things like that. Is is that what's important? We know it's important to us. People aren't gonna, people aren't gonna vote for that. Would they vote for a community center? They might not. We don't do childcare anymore. We don't, we might not need that space. But I think going in and just saying, if if the council doesn't wanna do a community center, by all means, then tell us and we won't, we won't even put that out there. But it definitely. My concern is that we're we're setting parameters that are really strict without hearing what people might come up with that could actually work.
So as I noticed, this is, I'm talking about a narrative process. We're gonna do today what we need to do. That doesn't mean in the future that someone wouldn't come along, like a like a dog park or a childcare facility, says, hey, we will fund and do this thing. My problem with the the master with master plans in general is that they they create, they they create a wish list. Whether you intend to or not, they create a wish list. That we should narrow this down to what we need to do right now, because we're barely gonna be able to get that done with the funding we have, let alone a community center. When it it's hard to call the previous building a community center, it really was a childcare facility. But so it's hard for me to think that that existed. So that's that's my position. I I think the more we narrow it down, the more likely we are to accomplish it.
May I make a suggestion?
Let's let the city manager respond.
So. The the struggle that I'm having is a master plan can, it can be a wish list, it can be any number of things. It doesn't have to be constructed all tomorrow. If we decide that the in doing the master plan process, that the restrooms and the office spaces are the are number one, and we find a way to fund those, great. If we then say, hey, here's the things that are in this master plan, here's generally where they're gonna go. Pickleball club, go go start fundraising, go find grants, go find anything. We can implement that over time. It doesn't all have to be done tomorrow. The flip side of that is we are running really low on summer class recreational class space in our communities. We held several classes in here over the summer that we won't be doing again next year because of the impact on this building as it is. And so those are some of the things that I I caution the council on taking too hard of a line of only this.
Can I ask you a question before we go to the motion maker, because she may redo her motion? My question is, if classroom space is what we need and summertime is the time for that, couldn't we partner with Luciemar and use facilities that are already there?
So we're gonna be talking with them about that. Yes, we we do partner also with the Temple of the People down in Halcyon to use some of their spaces. So we'll continue to look at those. Not every group wants us to utilize their sites during the summer times. But can it be done? Yes, it can.
Okay. I have a question for you, and I have a question for you, because you're the motion maker. My involvement in this process over the last few years, and especially with regard to adding to the building, has been, would a group like Boys and Girls Club come and partner with us, or YMCA? That's not going to show up in a community survey or a community workshop. So my vision was that the community workshop was going to talk about pickleball and tennis and football and the use of the sports uses, not the building itself. To me, the building itself, I mean, people can say, yeah, I want classrooms. But until they, I I feel like that's a staff-level decision. I feel like that's a something that that we make in concert with other organizations, not necessarily with the community. So I'm starting to struggle a little bit with that one. So I wanna understand what the community outreach on the building looks like from your point of view.
So it's more of a overall, in this area or in our community, what what types of recreational uses are are we lacking? What are you looking for? And we know classroom space is one that is down there. It could be that they say, oh, we want a million, pardon me, we want a million more pickleball courts. Okay, well, that's not, that's not feasible. We don't have the space for that. So really, it's not necessarily just feedback on the building itself. It's really, right now, where, where their temporary office is located, there's a ton of unused space now that the former community center's been demolished. Where does that new building live based on what all does it encompass? And that's really the, that's my hesitancy on, council, give us direction as you will. But without knowing all the other things that we... That will help us locate where the building goes, which will help us locate where the restrooms go, which will help us locate what we can do to optimize the parking situation down there, not necessarily add parking from what, what I'm hearing, but optimize the parking situation. So...
This is gonna sound, um, underwhelming, but I was thinking it's, uh, number two heading is like recreation support facilities. So if we have a vision for what, um, activities are going to be managed from, you know, from that area, that obviously then, uh, shapes what the building needs to provide for to support those activities. So, and that, and then it would give you an opportunity to, to look for partners. So, for example, I think if it's, if it's just office space, like you said, it might be hard to get other partners just to fund an office space. If the, if through the community process, there are, um, this, this little, um, range of options that we're talking about, it will say, okay, we need a building, we, we need to, we need to provide this type of storage and programming for, uh, to support these activities and therefore it's a building of this size. And then you, and then you have the ability to talk with partners about, do they wanna participate? So to me, this is an iterative process, but it has to start with, um, um, what are the main activities that we're supporting out of this, out of this office? And, and maybe it's not gonna change too much from what it is, but you want that community feedback to validate that. So, uh, if it's community, if it's recreation support facilities, it still seems that the feedback is important and the staff work is important to, to kind of confirm, um, what, what that building is, what it, what its purpose is.
Director Bulkin, don't we already know what the demand is based on our summer guide and all of that? I mean, we kind of know what the community wants, don't we?
We do, and we have an overwhelming response to the activities and the programs that we provide, but we are experiencing challenges with finding facilities to accommodate programs in the future. So some of the facilities that we are currently using, for example, there are several churches in the community that we utilize for our quilting, for our, um, other adult classes that we won't be able to utilize in the future, particular to their situations and their programming and limitations that they have to accommodate our programs. So we are constantly looking for facilities to utilize because we don't have a community center where we can house those types of programs. Uh, we also have used Luciemar, uh, classrooms, but there are challenges with those locations due to teachers having, not necessarily ownership of their classroom space, but certainly dedicated space to those particular teachers or subjects. And so there is challenges with utilizing those spaces. We did utilize two classrooms with Luciemar over the summer. And because of our, um, agreement that we are keeping children safe and that we are not allowing outsiders to come in, we had challenges, we used an NPR at one of the schools. That NPR was also scheduled to be repainted at the same time that we had the class inside that NPR. And so there were painters that were coming in and out. We had trouble with maintaining focus for the children while they were in that class as well as utilizing a bathroom because the bathroom was on the other side of the campus. So then that disrupted the class that we had to walk the children to the classroom or to the bathroom during the class. So there are challenges with other facilities. We don't have ownership, we don't have priority, we can get bumped at any time. So we've experienced those challenges as well with other facilities within the community.
But don't you know what those challenges are? And you can inform what you would have that building look like that would solve the majority of those challenges? I guess what I'm asking is, why do you have to ask the community what goes in that building when you kind of already have, they've told you what they want? How can we fulfill that in a recreation services building that's within our means? I mean, doesn't that, isn't that a staff level answer?
I think that's bringing the support from the community for the council to be able to verify and see that that's what the community is asking for versus the staff bringing that forward as a staff decision. Involving the community helps the community take ownership and pride over that facility or whatever that project might be. Bringing a project like that forward would be enhanced by having that community support.
So I guess I'll say that's exactly the wish list that we may not be able to, we may not be able to meet. I do, I do wanna say that, when I say the minimum facility, that doesn't mean that we wouldn't have some blank canvas out there for something that might come in the future. We're gonna say that this is where the recreation offices are and this space up here, at some point, will be developed with something else depending on who, what comes available or who comes forward at any given time. It's, it's just that when we get, what, what I feel is gonna happen, yes, we're gonna have some community input and some support. They may, they may even show up here, but actually it's not likely. And, uh, for classes or, or whatever, and that's going to make this facility too expensive for us to afford and therefore nothing will happen. I, 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 I definitely wanna see us achieve these two things, bathrooms and office space. Beyond that, we can do that five years from now. We don't have to have a plan. My experience is that these things are much more organic based on what's happening at the time, who's capable of, of delivering something, who, what, what the public wants bad enough to come forward and actually do it. Rather than, even though you say it's not a wish list, it becomes a wish list. So that, that, that's my thought. I'm, I'm not saying we would never do a classroom. If you had a way to, to put some classrooms over there and it was within the budget, I wouldn't object to that, but I wanna make sure we take care of these primary things first.
I just wanna observe that we took the most energetic community in Arroyo Grande and we bored the hell out of them and they all left. So, um, thank you for sticking around for this decision-making process. As you can tell, it's really, really hard. It's not as simple as it looks. And I appreciate you all still being here to watch us wrestle with this. As you can see, not one of us came here knowing what we were gonna do and we act as a, as a, not necessarily a team, but people who, who genuinely listen to each other and try and get to the best we can. So... With that, we have a motion and a second on the table. Let's take a vote.
And, and thank you, Mayor. I think maybe it might just be helpful to read back into the record. I know we've had a lot of deliberation, but just for the motion maker and the second, the elements for the master plan provide a direction on, um, community engagement. That was part A of, under community engagement, associated with recreation facilities. That's subsection C. For infrastructure, it's A through E with a note on parking to avoid an expansion on parking. And on number four, uh, in favor of the language as drafted in the staff report on connectivity, and with CEQA findings added. And that does not include, uh, action on part five on pickleball courts.
Okay.
Yes, that was my second.
All right, um, Madam Clerk, can you take a roll call, please?
I just have a question now, sorry. So we put an asterisk on parking and access to not include expansion. But when, when there was discussion about the number two, I don't know that there couldn't be parking associated with that. So I, I was just thinking, I didn't wanna constrain that. And so I might modify my motion to take the asterisk off. And it's just generic, it just has parking and access.
May, may I make a suggestion? If you, if that's your consideration, we might say, uh, optimization of parking. Because that basically says, do we reconfigure what we already have to make it more efficient?
Yeah, I just didn't, I just, having listened through all this, I didn't wanna exclude additional. I think that would be a, a false constraint.
So Councilmember Lowe, uh, are you in favor of, uh, City Manager Downing's suggestion on optimization of parking associated with the third part, infrastructure?
I was just thinking of leaving it the way the staff had it. It's generic. Just three, just three, just leaving three.
I think she's saying no asterisk on B.
Okay, understood. No asterisks associated with infrastructure would be an amendment to your pending motion.
Remove the asterisk, yes.
And, uh, to our second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ultimately, we've heard you.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Marbelia?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
No.
Mayor Ray Russom?
Sorry for the curve ball, no. I'm gonna try another motion.
Okay, uh, a- and just to note, because it was a two-two motion, that motion fails. Uh, so now a new motion can be brought to the floor.
Okay, um, we may go two-two again, but I'm gonna try and see if we can find consensus here. Uh, I will move then on item one, we go with A, with a, um... Favoring is not the right word, but, um, targeted outreach to locals, neighbors, and aged residents. That for number two, that we have A, uh, A and, I guess it would be B, but I would like it not to include the community survey. I want that to be staff proposed with consideration of our fiscal capabilities and constraints. And if staff can, in the meantime, identify a partner based on that, great. But if not, we're gonna move forward without it. I don't think we need a community survey with number two. I think we already have enough data and the community's told us with what they spend on us every summer or every season. Three, um, A, C, D, and E as written, and B as, uh, Mr. Downing said, which was, um, can you state that for me again, Mr. Rosen?
Uh, sure, uh, City Manager Downing mentioned parking optimization.
Optimization, yes, thank you. And, uh, number four?
I'll second that.
Uh, and apologies for... Okay, and then?
amended, yes.
Okay, thank you both, all right.
Any discussion?
No access improvements, you're striking that.
No, I'm saying optimization as council member, uh, council member, City Manager Downing suggested.
So would it, it would be optimized parking and access improvements?
Sure, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that was what you meant. Is that, yes, okay.
It's good enough for me.
All right, thank you. Uh, can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Ray Russom?
Yes.
Councilmember Marbelia?
Yes.
Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Uh, pickleball, do you want it, or you?
Yes, I'll go ahead. Yep, certainly deserve a vote on pickleball. I, I will move that we direct staff to, uh, permanently change one of the... Not permanently, switch one of the courts over to be exclusively pickleball. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Under comment, I just like say, I'm saying one court as opposed to do, really ruining two courts for tennis. I understand that I'm saying that there'll be no, there'll be no tournaments. But, but I, I think that's the better way to go is, is a full conversion of one of the, one of the courts.
Wait, I need to understand what you're saying. Is one court, two courts?
One, if we convert one court, we get four pickleball courts. If we do it permanently, we don't...
No, I mean, like, they're, they're kind of separated. I, I wanna make sure I'm understanding.
It's, it's one of those two.
Half of our tennis, is what you're saying?
Half, well, really, a quarter of the remaining tennis.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah. And instead of, yeah, instead of basically ruining two courts for tennis, we'll ruin one court for tennis.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Apologies, all, I, I, I do wanna make sure that, uh, I understand the motion. It is to convert one of the tennis courts to pickleball courts permanently?
Yeah, or permanently is the wrong word, but to, to being exclusively pickleball court, dedicated pickleball, there you go, dedicated.
And, um, Councilmember Guthrie, I would also recommend on this one just staff's recommendation on CEQA?
Yes, and CEQA does not apply.
Um, and Councilmember Lowe, to just confirm Councilmember Guthrie's motion directing staff to switch one of the tennis courts to exclusively pickleball and the CEQA exemption findings?
Yes, I'd like to know if he's amenable to amending the motion to say the conversion will be to make four pickleball courts.
That's my intent, yes.
Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Marbelia?
No.
Mayor Ray Russom?
No. Thank you. I, I'm being told to clarify for the public that motion fails because it's split. I am quite sure this will split again, but I will move that we defer until survey data and community input establish clear priorities for what to do with pickleball and tennis.
I will second that.
Any discussion?
Given the failure of the other motion, then certainly I can support that.
Any other discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, a roll call, please.
Mayor Ray Russom?
Yes.
Councilmember Marbelia?
Yes.
Councilmember Lowe?
No.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
All right, um, to everyone still sitting here, there is an election coming in another year, if you'd like, no, I'm just kidding. Um, thank you so much for at least watching us go through this excruciating process. I want to just, hopefully you're walking away knowing that we've all heard you and we're trying to just make it all work. And you're probably all mad at us, which probably means we did it right, I suppose. Yeah, everybody's equally unhappy and equally happy. Um, we're trying our best. Please continue, you've heard us, you've heard what we're talking about. Please continue to communicate with us and with staff because we have all now voted that we need to collect some more information and, and see what we can do to, to make this better for both groups. So thank you for that. That takes us, that is item 11. So that takes us to council communications. Any communications this evening?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I won't be here, um, at the next council meeting to give my council report. And I just wanted to highlight two things. And people are leaving, so they might not have a lot of impact other than those who might listen to the meeting later. Anyone, so, um, Slaughter has modified their Route 10 bus service. It eliminated some of the service to, um, Marion Hospital. So I think it's important if anyone has, um, a concern about that service change that they contact, um, Slaughter or me or the City of Santa Maria because the money, the service was cut because of, um, money that the City of Santa Maria, denied the program. And then, um, and I just wanted to also mention that, um, the, um, in, the Water Resources Advisory Committee is having a meeting on September 15th, a virtual meeting at 5:00 PM about their desal plan. And I know there's other... On, on September 15th at 5:00 PM, uh, the County San Luis Obispo will be hosting a community meeting about their desalination plan. September 15th at 5:00 PM. And, and I believe, um, S- um, Manager Downing and others are helping get the word out. So more information will be Friday.
Yeah, so not this weekend, but the 21st, uh, at the, uh, at the Concert in the Park will be, uh, Harvest Festival is the raffle. And also there will be the Arroyo Grande Valley Football, which is the under 12 football. They are selling tickets for the pingball, ping pong ball drop this year. So hopefully people will turn out and help us out with that.
Any other council communications? All right, this takes us to our closed session item. So I'll have the city attorney announce that and then we'll open up public comment.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So this evening, there's one item on the closed session agenda, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to paragraph two, a subdivision D of Government Code, section 54956.9. of subdivision D of Government Code, section 54956.9. The name of the case, San Luis Obispo Coast Keeper at All versus County of San Luis Obispo. The court case number is listed on the published agenda. And the facts and circumstances supporting the, uh, closed session agenda language include a subpoena served on the city.
Thank you, and I'll open up public comment and seeing no one but the chief. They got out of here real quick. Let's see if there's anyone online.
There are three hanging on. If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
Thank you. So we'll close public comment, we'll adjourn to closed session, we'll make any reportable action. Uh, we will report that out at our next city council meeting. And with that, we'll adjourn to closed session. Thanks, everyone.